It being 6:30, I call this meeting in Manchester by the Sea Select Board to Order. Jeff?
Yeah.
Brian?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Anne is here, and John?
John is here.
Excellent. The first item is...
This meeting is being recorded.
That's not an item, that's a declaration. And avoidance of an open meeting law complaint. Look what we have experienced. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items, here or online?
Not saying online, no?
The next item is the chairman's report, and I have nothing to report. We then discuss action items, which are things that we want to discuss in the foreseeable future. Kathy, you are the specialist in this?
I'm special, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
There are two there that we talked about that are not on today's agenda. One was the short-term bylaw.
I saw it here. On the, it's still on the action list, right? For the...
Yeah, it's on the action list. We just need to, we'll carry those forward.
Okay. I have two questions or comments. Should we put in a schedule here for the Harbor report?
Jeff?
You know when that's due, master plan?
That's not the Harbor Advisory Committee.
It's the...
So the Harbor Management Report.
Management Report, yeah.
I spoke to Sarah Creighton after we got the draft report, and she said they had a lot of work to do.
So it goes way down the...
Put it in the second August meeting.
Okay.
Second August meeting.
But, second August meeting.
Will you be here?
I'll be online.
I'll be virtual, so you can, you can exclude me if you want to.
And appropriately at sea.
There you go.
The other thing that we should have on there in the, for July 21st is a meeting with the Board of Health. Or do you want, should we do that? Do you think it would be better to do that as a...
It might make sense to do that as a special meeting.
As a special meeting.
Sooner if you could, but that's something to work out with scheduling.
Okay. Can we see if we can schedule it for the, okay, that planning board will be here on the... Not this Thursday, but the following Thursday.
The 26th.
Twenty-sixth.
That's, no, that's a bad day.
That's a bad day.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. What is the Thursday, first Thursday in July, probably the 4th?
The 3rd.
That's the 3rd.
That's the 3rd, it's close.
That's a bad day. Okay, how about the 10th?
Okay.
What is that?
The 10th, yeah.
Joint Border Health?
Joint Border Health and Select Board.
Okay, so...
Sixty?
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting that because I think you could get some resolution before your July 21st meeting.
Yes.
I think that'd be helpful.
Actually, then I'm going to change my, that I have nothing, my comment that I have nothing to add. We did discuss roles and responsibilities for the downtown improvement work, having a discussion with the Planning Board and the committee, just to be clear on roles and responsibilities, so there's no overlap. So I think we can discuss that at a Select Board meeting or a Planning Board meeting, but I just, I think it should be on the action item list.
Okay, what was it again? The roles and...
Roles and responsibilities for downtown revitalization or whatever.
Okay.
Invigoration.
Yeah.
And one other item, the facilities planning committee, do we have a timeline for that yet?
Nothing.
Well, we should get something in place largely because the senior center activities are kicking in, and they need some direction through the facilities planning committee sooner rather than later.
We just put out the notice for...
The three at-large members.
And is there a deadline for when that's supposed to, in other words, when can we elect those, approve those members?
Yeah, again, it'd be nice if you could do it on the 7th.
I think it would be helpful to at least make sure we have identified the other committees who are sending representatives, set a deadline for those.
Those people.
Yes, and then at large, we can...
Well, the 7th is a long way away for that, but for the at-large people, all right, can we put the 7th for that?
So the 7th, we will interview the at-large people?
Haven't received any, but...
Oh, well, we still have...
A last try, but...
Oh, we can give a little bit of...
Yeah.
Not doing, yeah.
Not doing, yeah. Yeah.
DC, so...
It does help to have a deadline, yeah.
Okay, so 7th, okay.
And giving the other committees a deadline to select their representatives as well.
That could be early. Okay.
So, we need to... Do we have the proposed bylaw? Is there a proposed bylaw for the short-term rental?
No, we do not. We need some direction on this.
It's hard to review some...
Right.
So it would make sense for one or two of you to work with a planning board member or two? That might be a good way, a good place to start.
This is on a, on a...
Decide as an action and discuss it while we talk about liaison assignments.
Okay.
All right.
By then, we'll have another town administrator also sworn in, because he'll be probably having some significant effort on that part as well. He may want to offer.
Okay. The next item is the new town administrator swearing in, and...
So we have Tony and a couple of very special guests with us, so it'd be great if all of them could come up perhaps.
Yes. Come up to the center and...
To the center.
You're welcome to bring the family.
I'm all right.
This is my wife Laura, and my son Rocco and daughter Amia.
Hello.
Hello.
So, very excited. Patient.
That's great.
So I'm going to have you raise your hand, thank you. You, Antonio Barletta solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as town administrator for the town of Manchester by the Sea to the best of your knowledge and ability according to the bylaws of the town, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Constitution of the United States.
I do. You're not coming, are you?
Formally welcome.
Thank you.
You can come around anytime.
You might regret that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Bye.
Yeah, I was just going to say, could we perhaps adjust the agenda? We have a lot of guests in the room who are going to be interviewing, and it...
Right. Can we just do the alcohol for the Manchester Yacht Club's supply for alteration to their alcohol license to restrict the area where, the licensed area? Are there any questions?
Can you open the public hearing?
Oh, sorry? Yes. Open a public hearing, I'd like to open a public hearing for, consider the alcohol license for Manchester Yacht Club.
Brian?
Brian had a...
Brian, Brian, we're going to open the public hearing.
Okay, Brian, that's your, that Brian's call, yeah.
Yes.
It's a long one to open now.
Just chill. I move that the Select Board open a public hearing on the alcohol license amendment, alteration of premises application, Manchester Yacht Club, 15 Tux Point Road, 3.
Sorry.
Close, I don't want to look like a fool.
I took that out.
Thanks, Deb.
Just testing.
I copied and pasted it, okay?
Second.
I've already said it.
Okay, second, okay, good.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Is there any discussion?
I'm just curious why.
It had been a...
An applicant here?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I'm the Commodore of the Manchester Yacht Club, and we have an attorney with us that can explain it.
Yes. So, good evening, everyone, my name is Ryan Goss, so I'm the attorney representing the yacht club. By brief way of the description, the present liquor license currently covers the entirety of the property, including the interior of the premise as well as the floats and docks. The application tonight is with the intent to fine-tune the description of premise for more particularity, as well as to scale back two portions of the property that are to be removed. The rooftop deck, if you will, and the outdoor float and dock area. Purpose of that is really so members of the club who dock their boat will have the ability to drink their own beverages that they bring off of the boat onto the docks. But that will not, those beverages will not go into the interior of the premise, and vice versa, drinks from inside will not go onto the docks. But other than carving out those two areas to be removed from the current description, no changes are proposed, and operationally, nothing will change at the club as well. That is basically the gist of it, but we're certainly happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Understood.
We need to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing unless there's a reason why we shouldn't do that. I move that the Select Board close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
Second. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes, John?
Yes.
I move the Select Board approve the alcohol license amendment to alter the premises, to remove floats and upper deck from the existing premise description at the Manchester Yacht Club, 15 Tux Point Road, Manchester by the Sea.
Sure, sounds true.
Second. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just want clarification.
Coffee and piece mistake, okay? Sorry, I'm at a loss.
Congratulations.
Okay. Okay. Now you would like to move to the candidates.
Yeah, if that's okay, yeah.
Yes, I read this whole thing.
You know it front and back? Good.
The first of the committee interviews is Donna Firth. Donna, would you like to make some remarks?
I wrote something small, but Donna Firth is a blessing lane, I'm just saying that. Good evening, and thank you for considering me for a position on your Board of Health. As a nurse with over 30 years of experience and a mother of four, health and well-being has always been central to my life. Serving on our local Board of Health would provide me with the opportunity to contribute to disease prevention and control, and to help ensure a safe and healthy environment for our residents. I deeply respect the role of the Board of Health in enforcing vital public health regulations and promoting wellness. The Board plays a key role in our town by establishing and upholding standards for housing, food service, and sanitation, often exceeding the minimum state departments. As a local arm of both the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Department of Environmental Protection, the Board's responsibilities must be taken seriously and approached with care and commitment. If appointed, I will approach this role with thoughtfulness and dedication. I'll be fully prepared for each meeting through research and review, and will actively engage in collaboration and with informed discussions. Most importantly, I will work to promote health initiatives that benefit our community. I have the time and energy to fully dedicate myself to the responsibilities of this position. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, it's a comment, but I'm glad that you raised your hand. You've certainly been active in the community, your reputation precedes you in that regard, and your background for this position is great, so...
I think it's a great fit for you, Donna, I agree with John's comments. Just one question for you. Do you feel comfortable understanding the role of a board versus other types of leadership positions, like what Wendy Hensbury does as a town employee? Do you feel comfortable with that distinction?
Yes, absolutely, and we work collaboratively together, and majority will decide the outcome of, you know, what we discuss and whatnot, but yes, I've only been to a few Board of Health meetings, I've met with them, I've met with Wendy, I look forward to learning and, because I've never necessarily been on a board, but...
Okay, and that's fine, you know, there's a first time for everything, so I would encourage you to understand that distinction, boards are policymaking, right? As opposed to managing day-to-day activities, there is so, and new board members sometimes need that reminder, so...
Sure, I'm going to need a lot.
No, but I really appreciate you standing up, your stepping up, your credentials are quite impressive. Thank you. Brian?
It's Johnson, your reputation precedes you, and yet we're still talking to you.
I know.
And you answered the question that we normally channel, Betty Jakes on, you do have the time.
I do.
And your credentials speak for themselves, so I...
Nothing, thank you for your willingness to step up and take this on, we appreciate it.
I appreciate you guys, thank you very much.
I can say, having worked with you on a couple of things, that you work very well with people you disagree with when it's necessary, you're civil and persuasive.
Thank you, Anne, I appreciate that from you, thank you.
So, ready?
All right, I move that the Board appoint Donna Firth as a member of the Board of Health for a term to expire on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes, John?
John says yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You, Donna, are kind of gentle, so...
This was so much easier than the last time. I was shaking, I went over.
All right. Go practice.
I know, thank you.
Thank you.
The next name, the next person is Matthew Gentas for the Historic District Commission. Would you give us a word or two about why you want to do this and what you bring to the town?
Well, thank you for, well, basically, John asked me if I would take over the commission. And I'm on the board of the Manchester Museum, so it's a good, and I have been on Historic District Commission board in the past in the town of Belen, and oversaw, oh, a rethinking of one of the main streets in town and earmarking with a group of MIT students what might be deemed historic in the future. I worked on a demolition delay bylaw that, with the town that got passed. And my background in architecture and construction and remodeling old homes, I think I'm a good fit for the mission.
Any questions, John?
You're a perfect fit.
You say that.
Matt, just for those who don't know, I mean, he is filling the slot of the Historic District Commission, of which there must be a slot filled on the, I mean, the museum, one of the slots on the district commission is for a museum representative, and also an architect. And so he's got background in both, and I know that your experience, Matt, and your interest in what's going on in town here will serve us well on the commission, for sure.
No question, I think your background is an excellent fit for what we're looking for. Thank you for stepping up.
Ready?
John?
Sounds like you're going to be a good fit, so thank you.
Thank you.
I move the Select Board appoint Matthew Gentas as the Manchester by the Sea Museum Representative, member of the Historic District Commission, for a term to begin July 1st, 2025, and expire on June 30th, 2028.
Second. Further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes, and John?
John says yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The next applicant is Holly Gavin.
Hi, I'm Holly Gavin, and I would like to volunteer for the Council on Aging Board. My family has lived in, most of us were born and raised in town. My grandparents were both volunteers in town, my mother and father were volunteers as assessors. My sister was the Board of, on the Board of Health, and this is my first venture into volunteering for the town. I am surrounded with seniors, I belong to the Golden Ages, I belong to the Friends of the Council on Aging, and I'm Vice President of the Manchester Women's Club. I previously, before I retired, I worked for 27 years at Salem Hospital in the surgical services, which doesn't have a lot to do with older people, but it does show that I get along and work well with others. And I think that's really a big point. I live at the Plains, so I see people and I talk to people that are my age all the time. And I hear what they're saying, I'm looking forward to speaking with more people about what they would like to see the seniors do in town. We're one of the rising demographics in town, I think we're up to 32% of the town are over the age of 60. So there's really a need for the council nation to really listen to the seniors in town. And that's why I'm volunteering.
John?
Yeah, no, Holly, thanks for raising your hand, you are indeed surrounded by seniors all day, every day. It sounds like, there's no question. Do you know the other members of the COA? I assume you probably do.
Jane Matrano is my husband's cousin.
Okay, all right. And I know that there is vacancy or two, I think, on the COA, you're filling one of them for sure, so... Or we're hopeful that's the case, but thanks for raising your hand, and we think you'll be a great asset because you're listening to your peer group sufficiently every day.
Jeff?
Yeah, it sounds like you're already well on your way to being involved, so, thank you.
Brian?
No, I think that I appreciate you stepping up, you're absolutely right, our demographic has shifted, or has already shifted, so seniors need a bigger voice than us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're well qualified, and you're, we're just kind of making this official, you're already engaged. So thank you very much for volunteering.
Me?
Yep.
I move that the Board appoint Holly Gavin as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire on June 30th, 2028.
So?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Kathy? Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous, again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We have Andrea and Jen here, if you wanted to go to the bond anticipation.
Sure.
Manny? Now your pen's warmed up.
This is the 32-page insert in...
These are just the signature pages, so, all you got to do is, I think I'll start here, you sign, goes along, and it'll end with that, so you can save them for me?
Now let's take the vote first.
Yeah, take the vote first.
Oh, sorry.
We haven't decided yet. So I don't know if you want to just give a quick overview of what we're doing here.
Oh, yes, you're signing. Yes, you're spending discussion. Matter of minutes. These are all the closing documents for the bond anticipation note, 4.1 million, for the next year, and then I think it will be back within a year for the next part of the, what was already approved at last 2024.
So we're going to spend all, we're going to spend 4.1 million in a year here?
Yeah, we're halfway.
Yeah.
We're already halfway there.
Yeah, we have spent most of the time yet already, so we need to...
We finish, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So this is for the sewer water process?
So sewer and, yes, sewer treatment stuff that's been going on for quite a few months.
Also the water.
This is the 4.1 water?
Oh, this is water.
Sewer is going to be, is being worked on, but that'll be mainly spent during FY '26.
And then next year, we'll be back to repay.
Repaying ourselves.
Yes.
Two bands, probably, for one bond?
Yes.
That was my question, is you're going to do a series of bands, and then a single bond for the 7 million, or whatever it is that comes after me?
Yes.
I think right now it's just planned on the two bands.
Yes.
Is there any, any sense of where the market is going? Sorry?
I mean, I was very pleased to get this rate.
Oh, that, your rate is great.
I think it's a good reflection on Manchester that we come across as a safe bet in a pretty uncertain moment, so that bodes well for us, but no, I'm not going to forecast.
Okay. So you assume we, there's no reason to go directly to a bond now?
Yeah, I don't think so, no.
No, and the higher the bond amount, too, like that's more marketable. And it's considered like a small, you know, like millions of dollars.
It's pretty small.
Considered small, so if we can like just roll it over, and then, also, one part of the plan is, you know, we have the capital assessment for the water, we want to use some of that next year to pay down some of this band before we roll it over again, so that'll save us an interest cost as well. If we do a band.
Unless the numbers go up, in which case you'll keep it.
No, the whole plan was to...
Just roll in the middle one?
Roll it out, so, yeah.
All right.
Less bar, less pay, sure. But, you know, there were a lot of documents, and so these are just the signature pages.
Those, those documents, put you to sleep.
I know, I know. People who have their jobs...
Imprescient.
That's a good idea. Is there further discussion?
My motion?
Yes.
I move that the Select Board adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in print before the Board in connection with the sale of 4.1 million dollars in general obligation bonds, anticipation notes of the town, and sign-related closing documents.
Second.
Further discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Anne says yes, okay. Now you can start casting that red flag.
All right. One.
Is that the first one?
Yeah.
Pass them down.
This is my first lady.
That's it.
Only like four or five pages.
That's it.
Last one, please. Done. We feel much.
Practice, all good.
I'm going to sign something, no one ever asks for my signature.
That's fine.
I think that's it.
Wonderful, thank you, guys. It was amazing.
Want to stay for the next one?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just wait for this next topic.
Yes, oh, well, there you go. Ms. Bruce?
About what we title it?
Harry Health.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, questions on that.
Greg, would you like to explain generally what we're doing?
Sure. So the town provides health insurance coverage for both active employees and for retirees. Part of general law that was adopted many, many decades ago. And for the active employees, we have been slowly shifting percentages. The town paying a little less percentage and employees picking up a little more. We have not done that for retirees. It's really stayed at the same 75-25 for a long time.
Although those that retired at 70-30, now that's been, we actually have people retiring at the 70-30 rate. They stay at 70-30 as retirees, but all the grandfathered people, yeah, hold steady at 75-25.
So the suggestion is that you should move off of those who are still at that 75-25 split and move to 70-30 to be in line with all the other regular staff and so that they don't actually have a lower percentage when.
When they retire.
When they retire.
And their income goes down and.
So that's part one is for retirees who are Medicare eligible, that they would go to that 70-30 split. And then we do have employees who retire before they're 65. And if they do, they stay on the active plan. And we have been paying that 70-30 split for.
Yeah, whatever they retire at, they'll stay at.
Right. And so the recommendation is for those folks in that situation, that we really shouldn't be paying that much for health insurance. So we really should go to the minimum, which is 50-50. And so that's, again, that's the second part of the proposal. Is that you would, again, and the proposal here is to give people a year's notice, give them plenty of time to understand what's coming down the bike and have time to adjust as needed or to make different decisions if they choose. So implement this starting a year from now, July of '26.
I see. So the bulk of retirees are on the Medex plan, right? And that's a calendar year run type of thing?
That's true, yeah.
So, and I agree, a year would be a good notice amount, particularly for the ones that retired 20, 30 years ago. And, you know, they did just, they just experienced a very big increase this year, Medicare recipients of the Medex plan, now about 20%. It's the highest increase since I've been here. It's the first big one. So waiting six months and then in January maybe saying, hey, come next year at this time, contribution levels split into 70. Because it wouldn't really work to do it on a fiscal anyway. It's mid-year for the bulk of the retirees. But it gives them plenty of time to look around and find another plan if they want. Gives them an entire open enrollment period for other plans outside. So that January of 2027 would probably be the best rollout for the contribution level change for Medicare at this point, unless you want to do it in six months, which I think is, they might not have time to get, you know, an open enrollment, to look around for another plan in case they want to. Plus, they just had that huge increase. So to add on top of that, this gives them a year and a half to get used to that increase before sort of winning the next one.
So retirees have a choice of Medicare or Medex if they're over 65?
No, sorry. Once Medicare eligible, they have to go Medicare.
They go Medicare.
Medex is a supplement plan offered by the town.
Well, that's a supplement plan.
Offered by the town.
Okay. For retirees over 65?
Yes.
Goes beyond that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's a supplemental, it's not.
And that's all that the town contributes to, obviously under Medicare or anything like that, just the supplement.
And that's an option?
Yeah.
I don't know what percentage of.
There are a lot of plans out there, a lot of supplement plans in the markets. So they don't have to go with the towns.
Why 50-50 for the early retirees?
So it's really because of the expense of the.
Oh, I know that's a really expensive.
So, and it's, it's, it's not something we like to encourage people to do.
Retire early, I think.
We, I thought we had positions from which your retirement was required.
She's seeking public safety for one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's mostly what you'll see people retiring. Mostly retirees with active plans are public safety, yeah, because they can retire a little earlier.
And when they retire, that Medex plan is not a supplemental plan? Because if they're retiring before 65, they need.
They can't get the Medex.
They can't get the Medex.
Exactly. They have to stay on the active HMO plans, the regular.
Right, they stay on a full healthcare plan.
Yeah, they're staying right on the full healthcare.
So this would not apply to them, this Medex change?
The Medex change doesn't.
That's what I'm saying.
But their contribution rate goes from 70-30 or 65-35 to 50-50.
Whatever the town's plan is.
Yes, from 75 to.
50-50.
50-50?
50-50.
For the public safety?
What?
I thought that confused me. I thought you said the 50-50 was only for the early retirees who were on.
Okay, I think I know what Greg's intending here. He wants to go 70-30 across the board for all medics. That's the bulk of retirees, right, are over 65 and on a Medicare supplement plan. They are currently the ones grandfathered at 75-25. So, and some of them have been around for decades and they're just, you know, not going anywhere. So it's about changing that to 70-30. However, what we call active plans are people who retire before the age of 65 and aren't Medicare eligible. So they have to retire with their HMO or their whatever very expensive plan. I think you're suggesting that anybody who retires on an active plan is a 50-50 contribution rate. Anybody who is Medicare eligible, they'll be on the 70-30 split with the Medicare supplement.
How many people would that affect right now?
Active plans?
Yeah.
Have to do the numbers, I would say a couple, a dozen.
I think it would make sense for us to get a little more information and to have it clear in writing what it is you're asking us to approve. Because some of the nuances you're describing here were not clear to me based on the package that we received.
Yeah, I have to.
I'm a tad confused and concerned that public safety will have to retire.
Right.
Okay, they're gonna be penalized because they have to retire.
Right.
That doesn't sound clear.
What happens with somebody who gets hurt on the job or something like that?
You can retire, you don't have to retire. You can work till 65.
The question was asked, maybe you didn't hear it. The question was asked, are some of our public safety professionals required to retire at a certain age? Required?
Before 65?
Not before 65.
Okay, so not before 65. So this is somebody who in theory can afford to retire early. And you want, you're suggesting that they could afford to pay more?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a choice, it's something forced upon them.
Right, it's not a force.
That was my question.
So, and I heard the same thing you did, so I understand. So that's why I'm asking for something laid out in writing, just a one-pager. What are we, you know, a little chart here, because I think I missed that nuance. Some of the information you're describing here is a little bit.
We didn't go into the details of the public safety.
No.
And that is a concern.
Yeah, and how many people does this affect? So I like your suggestion, giving them a year and a half, you know, what's the cutoff period? Would it be the same for everybody or just, you know, I'm thinking of a table. I want a table, you know, I love my charts. I want a table, okay.
Do you want that pie or do you want a graph?
No, no, just a table chart, you know, here's what the way it is now. Here's what we're looking to change. Here's how many people it would affect, the effective date. That would just make it super easy.
I've got a question. What's the definition of active? What's the definition of active plan? In other words, the plan that the town offers at the moment?
Just to current employees.
Right.
We call it active because active employees, meaning you're actively employed, not retired. Typically, that's the way it goes.
But it says active plan, so that's an active plan.
That means the HMO, the one.
Whatever the HMO or the, the plan is that's enforced. And if somebody retires before 65, the suggestion here is that's a 50-50 split. They stay on that plan.
Yes.
Now, if they say, I can get a better deal elsewhere, all bets are off and they're paying 100%. It's their problem. We're not picking up.
Or they might have a spouse who can cover them. This is like.
Or the other side of it is, they may have a spouse that's dependent on it.
Right, so that's why, given people a year and a half, I like that suggestion because they have plenty of time to research plans. In theory, if someone is retiring before 65 or 67, whatever their date is, they can afford to do so. So, but this would change their math a little bit. You want to give them enough time before they put in their papers.
Often if the plan is attractive and they can afford it, they won't bother to consider. Nowadays, you know, typically retired couples also have two.
Right.
Two social securities, two options, you know. It's no longer just the single worker in the household, so everybody's relying on the same plan. So it's kind of to incentivize them to look around and think, would we do better here or there?
What happens to somebody who has to retire for medical reasons?
So if they have another reason, they may be a Medicaid, right? So if they're Medicaid, then they could have the Medex.
Medicaid disability?
No, I mean, if you're, if you have medical issues, you're still working. There's disability.
Social Security disability.
Medicaid is a different thing.
Yeah, it's Medicare disability.
Right, well, maybe they have a medical condition, but it's not enough to be fully disabled. They just can't continue in the role that they had.
But that's not a retirement issue, that's a disability issue. Short-term disability versus long-term disability. That's, you know, how you handle those.
Well, down the road though, they would, oh, I guess.
Well, I mean, today you could have the same issue. You know, someone at 59 has a medical issue and they can't wait till 65 or whatever. You know, that's a disability issue, so.
But because, if I'm wrong, then my understanding was that if you had that kind of a qualified disability, you can start Medicare earlier.
Yes, you can. People on disability.
Right, so if you have a disability, you can go on Medicare before you're 65. And then you could have, and then you're just on the Medex. But you have your Medicare card, then you can get your Medex.
The Medex will be your supplemental.
Medex is the Medicare card.
Yes.
Then they're in one of the other bulleted points here.
Right.
And just not 65. Okay.
Yeah, so the 50-50 is only for those people who, proposal, 50-50 proposals, only for those people who choose to retire early in theory because they can afford to do so. And so if they can afford to retire early, we are suggesting they pay a little more. So that's not a burden on the town.
In addition to consideration that typically a position that retires is going to be filled and the town may be paying two family plans now for the one position, so.
Yep.
Okay.
I think I need more info if you want some time.
How long will it take you to pull together that information?
So I have to admit, Kathy, I'm sorry, I'm not good at tables. I'm a talker. I know all this in and out.
We need to see something in writing, yeah.
And people, if I just had my invoices in front of me, we could talk numbers.
Yeah, I think it's still helpful to have something in writing with the numbers of people impact. So categorize, you know, here's what you want, change number one. Here's how many people it affects and here's the savings to the town, you know.
And I'd also like to know how many people we have in the active, retired active who are a family plan.
Yep, I can get that easily. And I mean, somebody might have eight years left on that plan. Somebody might have eight months, you know, just because they're retired on a plan. We don't know for how long. You have options if you want to do a going-forward type of thing, which I hope not, because it's even more calculation. But again, the more, the more warning people get to this. So maybe you're thinking of retiring the next year and then you hadn't even thought about it and you figure that out, you know. I can get those numbers, so how many it would impact and who's on what, sure.
Yes.
Can you get a reply?
She can make a table. She can make a pretty table.
Oh, she's a table person.
I love it, so.
Yeah.
She does work.
Can you get to us for a next?
Sorry, what?
Can you get to us for a next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. That'll be.
Wait, when is that? I should say that, I should ask that.
Seven. July 7th.
We have you an extra week.
Okay.
Because of the.
Sure. I mean, I might just send it off way before then. Okay. Is that good? Any other questions? This stuff is, yeah, I've been doing this a long time. I would love to, I would welcome the 70-30 because there's a lot of contribution levels and I just think it's consistent by, it's an incremental thing. You don't want to jump from 25% to 50, you know, for a retired Medicare person.
Well, the bill for the Medex is a lot less than the bill for the full active family plan.
And the plan is good, so they like it. And I'm sure even with the 5% contribution level increase, it would still be a really attractive plan. With cross nationwide plan, everybody's very happy with it. Never heard one person complain about the Medex, so they'll pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On our agenda are several end-of-year transfers. Are there any, has everyone reviewed them and are there any that we have questions about?
I got some questions. One of them, well, it's a general question. First of all, there's a lot of money coming out of, what, health insurance? You're shifting out of health insurance to cover other things, a comp? What's going on with health insurance? Why have you got all that money left over there?
Usually I have a cushion of about three to four plans. I believe this is two, we needed two plans and now this is the, we need two plans. I'm using the first one there.
Okay, I mean, that's kind of expected. Usually that happens every year. I mean, I can't remember past years. So a lot of times, that's a source of money?
It is, and we've like, we've dialed it in a bit, so it's a lot less of a cushion.
Okay, couple of individual questions. Parking ticket processing, $26,000. We receive revenue from the parking sticks, I understand. However, we must pay for an appropriation to the vendor for use of the sticks and related program. I didn't know that there was any other cost to us other than we were splitting the money.
Right.
Isn't that how we're splitting it?
It is how we're splitting it. So the way it works is like they'll send us money and then whatever the fee, minimum fee it is, we have to send that back out.
Right, run that by me again, I'm not following.
It's almost like the ambulance, like, you know, they send out the bill, they collect the money, they send it to us, but then we have to pay the vendor their fee of collecting that money and processing.
So, so net.
It's not like, they don't net it.
So it's like a hundred dollars and they send us $40. And then we gotta send them back.
They send us a hundred.
They said it's a hundred, we gotta send them.
And then we have to send them the sticks.
Oh, so they get the hundred, they send all of it to us?
Yes.
So they don't pay with our money?
They send all of our money and we gotta pay them?
Well disguised, okay. So, but right now that, those numbers are working out, I guess?
Yeah, we do want to make sure that they're adhering to the agreement that we had with them, not charging us the minimum during the non-use months. That's something that the chief is going to follow up on to make sure that that's the case. But the intended use of these sticks is to turn parking spots over, wasn't that the?
Two uses. One is to turn them over, the other is to the fire hydrant, you know, people not parking too close to this. I thought there was one category of the sticks that should be used year-round because no one should be blocking a fire hydrant, no matter what time.
I don't know why they put a stick, that doesn't, I wouldn't think that would pay for them. Put it next to a fire hydrant?
No, I mean, or, you know, so many, so many feet from the crosswalk and, you know, those should be active year-round, why wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a detail that we'd have to double check.
I think you need to double check that because we don't want to, that's a year-round.
I assume at some point down the road, there might be kind of some sort of accounting. We will ask for, I think, just to say, because right now they're still, they're well into the middle of the experiment. Let's see what the story.
Beyond experiment, we've expanded.
So, yeah, so I mean, right now the trend looks good. Second question, police expenses, additional expenses for vehicle repairs, ammunition costs. We're running out of ammo, what's going on here? What are they?
Well, the ammo prices have increased significantly that we weren't expecting.
Was this for target ranges? They're not shooting?
For training. Yeah, and they have more required state trainings for ammunition. So that was like a kind of double landing share for that.
The other factor was, is reduced the amount of time other departments use our firing range. And they used to give us ammo in exchange for using our range, so. So people, you know, we're getting complaints about the noise at the firing range. So he has cut back on the use.
And they're for.
Not as much as when I gave him.
I gotta buy our own ammo.
Right.
And the other question I had was the town report printing.
Yeah, that's a good discussion to have.
Should we start that now?
It was expensive.
Yeah, I mean, we should start that discussion.
Did we discuss this once?
10,000 copies. And I don't know, that printers has gone from, what, 10,000 copies down to 5,000, down to 2,500 this year or?
Just for the, for the PINCOM report, but down to 400.
400.
For the annual report.
That one was fine, it's, yeah.
It's the annual report that's killing us. That's an expensive little booklet.
Yes, that's the colored book.
Yes, the colored book.
Yes, I have a copy here.
You know, staff recommendation would be to.
Black and white.
Go, go to digital.
Digital.
This thing?
Yes.
What is this, like, 20 bucks a copy or something?
I haven't done the math for, for that.
I mean, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's.
Have you gone out the bit?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, town, town is expensive, I know.
I'm, I was just trying to do the math here, and I didn't like the numbers I was coming up with on a per-copy basis.
I can say, I can show you the bill, John.
Oh, I, I believe it.
Yeah.
So, can we revisit this in a couple of months?
Yeah.
I think we probably ought to pay the bill.
Oh, we got to pay the bill.
But paying the bill.
No, we're not forward.
Maybe put this on the agenda item or something.
What are other towns doing?
Some, a lot of them are digital.
A lot of them are digital.
A lot are doing digital.
Yeah. Because of the cost.
A simpler format, a lot just use the eight by eleven, which is less expensive. They're not doing color, they're not doing pictures, you know, so.
I mean, if we put it on digital, we can make it as pretty and colorful as we want, and just stick it on a website.
I will tell you, I.
Send it to Staples. Yeah.
I went to a town a few months or so, a town where I used to live, and I said, I just, I just wanted to see their report. They went to the printer and printed out a 75-page report. He said, you know, I'm sitting there, and they're just cranking it out, because they're only going to have to do that ten times. I'm one of those guys. And everything else was digital, and that was it.
With QR codes and?
I think, I like that.
So we can discuss this while we're in the.
Yeah, we had talked about that with Tony.
Let's talk about this in October.
And you put that down there on the?
That thing there?
I have it written.
Perfect. Those are all the ones I had.
Um, the only one I had a question, I was in police overtime. So what was the scoop on that? What's kind of driving that?
That was the additional trainings, community trainings, to be in compliance with accreditation and posts and all of that.
The harbor mask? Or the, or just?
They were separate.
Okay.
They were separate.
So for new police officers, or just, we forgot to plan, or?
We didn't know originally about the additional trainings.
So post increased the amount of required hours per officer.
Post made changes?
Posts.
Yeah, I know, they, they made changes, the.
Well, they didn't.
They, post came out in 2021, right?
They articulated their demands.
Okay, so we're just understanding what the requirement was all along. Okay, all right.
Yeah, then, you know, officer on medical leave, another on material.
Right, understand, I just, like I said, that seems to be more of a planning issue here, though, so we just want to, whatever the lesson learned is, we should take that into account for the future.
And we'd be good for 26.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about this line out of select mentalities. I don't remember getting one.
I think that's why it's zero, not like.
There's a transfer going there. I don't know, higher math.
Okay. Brian, are you prepared to make the motion, or?
Oh, is that my turn? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll make that motion. It seems like kind of a.
I might have one more question.
Okay.
Well, you're going to transfer, okay, okay.
And, and really, it's kind of at the end. We're in the black this year, I assume?
Yes, overall, yes.
Okay, so I didn't quite understand.
Did I say that confidently?
Yes.
We are in the black, but we transferred $150,000 out of our, our fund reserve, of which is, what, like, three and a half, four million dollars?
No, these are not coming out of the.
It's not coming out of the reserves, what's it coming from?
So the, there's two different reserves. We have an annual operating finance committee reserve fund, which is $150,000 that we voted for FY '25.
Okay.
And then we also have our other reserves that we, that include free cash and stabilization that we vote from for town meeting for capital and other things like that. So there's a, I know they vote all the same thing.
Yeah, this is something that's explicitly given to the finance committee to handle.
To work with.
Overruns.
Yes, unexpected expenses.
So it's not expected to be carried over from year to year.
And used at all?
We generally, we generally use it.
Okay.
Well, in fact, we would, we would tap it first before we start shifting dollars from one account to another. Because those dollars just flow back, well, they both flow back in the free, on balance, but it's just a general practice.
But we're on trend, I mean, there's only a couple of weeks left, and that'll be in the black.
Yeah, this, this is anticipating what we think. My best guess is over the next two weeks, you know?
I yield to Brian.
All right. I move the Select Board to approve the interdepartmental transfers of reserve fund request as presented.
Second. Thank you, that view seconded. Further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yep.
Answers, yes?
John, yes.
Okay. I assume you have a stack of paper for me?
Yes.
Okay. I will, I will stay after school and sign those.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
You're all going to.
Thank you.
Water.
Okay. Right. Wendy is here. Thanks. Do you want to start the discussion with you guys in there?
Sure, sure. So, as, as I explained in the memo, and I think most of you are giving up the speed, we have a situation with the gauges, Katrina is here this evening. And this started, I guess, in earnest about a year ago, with some concerns about the roof. A permit was applied for to do some roof repairs, but it was never acted upon. And then this past fall, concerns were brought to the attention of, of the health agent. And she reached out to the gauges to try to talk to them about the concerns. At that time, it was, came to the understanding that the property does not have running water, which is a sort of a pretty bright line in terms of state law. Any, any home that is occupied needs to have running water, cold water and hot water, functioning for it to be a habitable home. And so the, the Board of Health instituted a request to, to the gauges to make those improvements. That was in November and December. I believe, if I have my timeline right, the gauges agreed to start those improvements and would, would share that information with the board to get contractors lined up and ready to do that work. Come March, nothing had changed that we could, that we understood. And so the board, again, engaged with the gauges and held a, held a formal meeting with the gauges and voted to give them one month to, to, again, show progress, meaning they, we wanted to see contractor brought on board so that the work would, would be undertaken. Again, nothing happened. Nothing was shown to the board that that was the case. And then the board had another hearing with, with Katrina present, and they voted at that meeting that they needed to take it to, to court. And so, court hearing was held, the judge gave another 30 days to, to make the improvements. That 30 days ended June 9th, and again, no progress as far as we are aware of. So that brings us to where we are today. Again, there's a real desire to, to bring the house up to code so that the gates can live there properly, in, in comfort, and, and according to state law. So the, the state laws are pretty explicit and straightforward, particularly when it comes to the running water. And so the judge at the original hearing back in May suggested that if no progress was made by June 9th, that he would recommend that the case proceed to receivership. And so what that would mean was that the town would go back to the judge and say, yes, we would request that the property be placed under receivership. The judge would assign a receiver. A receiver is a person whose job it is to make sure that, that work gets done on a piece of property, to bring it up to code. So the receiver would actually hire the contractor, pay for the contractor, and have that work completed. Once that is done, a bill would be given to the property owner, in this case, the gauges would get a bill from the receiver, paying for the work of the contractor, plus the receiver has a fee as well. So in addition to the fee for, for the contractors, there would be a fee to pay to the receiver. And if the, the property owner makes that payment, then all is good, they continue to live in the property, the property, there's no liens, it's, it's theirs, free and clear, and they can, they can live in the property, that's now up to code. If the property owner were not to pay for the receiver's fees, the, for the contractor to win the receiver fee, then the receiver does have the option of, of putting the house on the market, collecting his fees, well, for the contractor himself, and giving the balance of the proceeds to the owner. Obviously, the house would no longer be in their name. So not a desired outcome by, by any means. So the, the process of, of going to receivership and having that signed and, and ordered by a judge is probably a two and a half, three-week period from the time you say, let's, let's continue to that level. So that would give the, the gauges another, you know, another three weeks to come into compliance, or at least to get the ball rolling in that direction. And if there was evidence of a contractor on board making the necessary improvements, then, then we wouldn't, we would, we would tell the judge not to proceed with the receivership.
I guess, my, my first question is, the time between you sign, I sign a contract with a contractor, and the time they show up tends to be more than three weeks.
Right, so I think the board was comfortable with, with having a signed contract, that that was, that was signs of good progress, and, and that, that shows a very good faith effort on, on the owners to, to correct it.
I assume that turning the water on is also.
That's supposed to be part of the contract.
Right, that, that needs to be part of the work. Yes. Yeah, so that's, that's where it is. We have Wendy Hansberry, who's our health agent, she's on, online, she can answer additional questions, she knows the details of that timeline that I briefly went over in better detail than me. So if you have specific questions about that, certainly Wendy could help. But obviously, the gauges are here as well, so they can answer questions.
So I have a question, what, what is our responsibility as the Select Board versus the Board of Health on this?
So this is a Board of Health matter, but you control the purse, purse strings. So when there's a, you know, going to court, you ultimately have the, the say as to whether or not to proceed with court proceedings. So that's your role.
So that's what we're voting on, or we're deciding?
Yeah, so you, you're authorized to proceed with, you know, court expenses, you know, we have to continue to pay legal town council to, to process this and appear before the judge, and so there's expenses obviously involved.
My next question is, is there a hard trip here, why this hasn't happened, or?
Well, so I certainly think the gates can speak to that.
Could you give us your name?
My name is Michael Gates. I live at 31 School Street, which is across the street from 2000 Avenue, that's parents' house, across the street. There are several mischaracterizations that have continued throughout this. One is that no one has been contacted. There has been a contractor, there's a signed contract that he has been spoken with, and he came and did the roof on my house just a few weeks ago, and the same contractor is also the one who is in talks to the, this is, goes beyond last year to do their home as well. So the, the idea that no one has been contacted to do the work is incorrect, and been pointed out several times, and, but there, there is no signed contract, so that is.
That's the evidence that I'm looking for.
Yeah. The contracts provided for them, there will be for their home as well, once they determine the full extent, because my mother also left in addition, and several other things, so it's not just. Another clarification, this to do with the water specifically, this is what the judge on May 9th is adjudication was that reconnect the water within a 30-day period, so that is accurate. In the course of that time, my father on 14th of May ended up going to the emergency room for an eye condition, so our lives, and so we've had some issues going on at the same time. So he was in the hospital for a week, and then he was in a living patient for another week. So I was, my parents, neither of them permanently have a car or drive, my dad's 91, and so I'm, I've been shuttling them back and forth to hospitals and rehabs, and so we've had a lot of things going on. In the meantime, I'm also, myself, been speaking with lawyers to try and figure out what's going on, like, because I didn't know exactly was the 9th to the 9th, or is it from the day that the, the filing was received? Because even though the court case was on the 9th, the notification of this verdict was received about a week later. So I, myself, had gone to Salem Court to, to ask about this, and get clarification from myself, like, is it on the 9th to the 9th? Or is it the 15th to the 15th when we receive the notification? During the course of the last month, I, I have been in contact with a plumber, he's been communicating with me for about three weeks now. In order, the reason the water was off in my parents' house initially was because pipes had frozen one winter, and there, there were leaks in, in the system because of that, so the water was shut off. The plumber, who had been in communication, was aware of this. Access into the basement has been very difficult, so we have located three of the locations that need to be addressed for the frozen pipes, but the plumber also needs to get access to a crawl space that's under kitchen. And so during the course of the last several weeks, I've been slowly clearing out the basement so the plumber can get full access to all the piping within the house, so that he doesn't just turn on the floodwaters basically and flood the house again. So we're, that's sort of, the sort of the practical things of what's been going on within the last couple of weeks to address this issue. I've gone back to Salem Courthouse myself to ask about this, and they said that, because I wasn't quite sure how this proceeds with court filings and everything else. I'm aware of something called an injunction, where you can stop a court proceeding. So I asked, is that what we need to do, or what? She said, the person I spoke with was, I don't have the name offhand, but she told me that no, you wouldn't need to file an injunction, you could just file for a motion to delay, but you don't actually file for the motion to delay until there's another court case date, and currently, there is no future court date, but you wouldn't be able to file the motion for delay until you have a future court date, so I was like, okay. And she said, well, just, you know, keep track of what you have been doing and present that, so that they know you've been making a good faith effort to resolve the issue. So that's what I've been doing, I've been contacting the plumber, the plumber will be addressing this situation, but first, he needs full clear access to all of the basement, and that's what I've been working on myself, trying to get. There's about two-thirds of it that's accessible, there's one-third that's still to go before he can get into the crawl space. My parents' house was built in the 1700s, and so there is no full basement, especially in our kitchen, you, it's quite literally a, a crawl space that you have to get into. So the plumber just needs me to clear more areas for him to get to, to access the full plumbing of the house, to address the connection of the water. That's just some of the clarifications of some of the misconceptions that were presented.[1765.56] My mother has other things to talk about.
I also have some questions. Okay, okay. So it's my understanding that these actions are requested because there is an impression that somebody is living in the house, okay? So because if there's a house that's, you know, not in great shape or, you know, in progress of repairs and no one's living there and the water's shut off, who cares, right? The linchpin here is, is somebody living in the house? So I would like to know if someone is living in the house, and if no, where are they living? Because it seems to be some please connect there as to... If I can just finish my comment, yes, thank you. Yeah, so to me, that's the linchpin here, is there evidence that somebody is living in the house? Because that, without that, I think the whole thing falls apart, so.
My name is Katerina Gates, and we're the owners of the two doesan. I, when we first, we went from the beginning, how the water was shut off and the roof, where you needed to be fixed on the front, but the backside of the roof was not a problem. The roof started having a problem after we rebuilt the chimney from the roof line up. And we didn't know that the person who did the chimney stepped in the wood edge of the thing and didn't tell us. Just walked away, got his money, and eventually, with the winter coming, realized there was some problem on the roof. And we found out we're actually, and that's why all the problems started and everything.
The question is not the roof. The question is, where are you living?
So now, when we were confronted with this, you see, first we started, the water was off because we don't buy water to drink. We buy water to drink anyway. So we have the house across the street, and we felt we needed...
Whether you drink groundwater or not is not relevant. What is required?
We lived at Michael's house. He has four bedrooms, three bathrooms, two with baths, one with shower. They said, where are you gonna go take a shower? We have been there since three years ago doing that. But we were sleeping in our home. That's the only thing we're doing. They said, you cannot sleep in your home.
Something in the house is happening in the house.
It's not in the house because we have been leaving the light on, even though we were months, four, five months away every year. The light in the kitchen has been on in the hallway all year round, day and night.
Are you sleeping in the house?
At his house, on the bench, not bench, on the couch. There is a double couch and opens up. We don't sleep in our house. And the neighbors who will talk to them, I wonder who are these neighbors who have never come home in our, ever in our home, to know what we're doing, or when we're there, what we're doing? And I was, I was reading in the filings that witnesses said we were living in the house. Even the first report that was done about having our, we have blocked our entrance to our home, it was not even corrected because the first time I heard that, when we were approached for the first time, October 17th. That was the first time I heard about it.
We're really not terribly involved with access to the house right at the moment.
Yes. But it was not even corrected ever, that it was not, it was only before overnight Michael had put some items on the front steps until we went to the door.
The two questions in front of us right now are the roof...
Yes.
And getting the water.
Now, the roof, we contacted him last fall.
Actually, there are three questions. Are you living there? Are you sleeping there?
Yes, we were, we were sleeping at his place, in the library. He has a double couch, the guarantee entered that way.
Yes, could you let Michael answer?
I'm sorry.
So we're technically all living in the house I live in. However, their clothes and things are in their house, and...
I'll have to go ahead.
And I'm in and out of their house all the time, usually at very strange hours because I do things at night a lot of times. So I'm in and out of their house all the time, trying to empty the basement on my time. So I rented a storage unit that I've been transferring their things into, a pretty storage facility. And so there are people in and out of the house all the time. It's not that the house has been abandoned and left. So I don't...
But we always kept the light on anyway.
I understand some people, that might be considered habitation, but, you know...
I won't...
When we had the first, so I was at the first meeting, and it was in the, I don't know if it was the same board, but it was a...
It was board of...
And the impression they gave, they were not going to allow us to go in and out of the house at all. Like, we were just supposed to vacate the house and give her access. It was very confusing. Because I was like, well, how are we going to address any of these issues? I can't even go in the house, which was, I don't know if this is some of the confusion.
I have a question.
But I'm in there several times a day, usually at odd hours, myself.
Another clarifying question I have. So I understand the issue of, so in the documentation we provided, and I, it was not clear to me what the exact issues were that had to be addressed for habitability. So I sent an email to Wendy, and she basically said the running water, and she sent the law, you know, about what, you know, has to be addressed to consider a home habitable. But, you know, it's heat, it's utilities, you know, all that stuff. But what's not clear to me is the water shut off is something you... She said the water was shut off at the homeowner's request. So it's like, not like somebody didn't pay the bill and they shut the water off. They requested that the owner, that the water was shut off. And that's clearly in the Board of Health's purview. But I guess I'm confused that items of construction, like a roof, is under the Board of Health's... I'm trying to understand to Jeff's earlier question. Where does their purview begin and end issues of construction? Are they worried that the house is going to fall down on somebody? The roof is going to fall down, or...
Yeah, so Wendy's on the line, perhaps? We can have her address that. You don't mind, Wendy?
Pardon me, I had, I couldn't hear anything of people speaking. So the question of...
So I understand that it is the Board of Health's responsibility to make sure that there is running water in a home in order for it to be inhabited. I was unaware that the Board of Health had purview over construction defects or issues like that, like the roof. The roof obviously needs some repair. I'm wondering how that falls under the purview of the Board of Health unless you are worried that the roof is gonna cave in on somebody? I'm confused about jurisdiction here.
Yeah.
Yes, so the jurisdiction is minimum standards of human habitation. So the state of Massachusetts has determined that you are required to have a roof in good repair on your dwelling. The state of Massachusetts says you have to have, you know, a shower of a certain size and plumbing of a certain, you know, tight average in electricity of a certain standard. These things are considered minimum standards for human habitation, and the state sanitary code encompasses all of that, and that is under the purview of public health.
Okay, that helps, thank you. I guess my question, though, is how bad does a roof have to be in order to be so serious that the home would be, you know, uninhabitable? I mean, I used to have roof problems in my old house, and no one tried to, you know... So I'm just, how bad does it have to be? Certainly, if, you know, there's, you were in danger of rafters falling down on somebody.
Or major hole.
A major hole, and, you know, the rain just comes in. I can certainly understand that. But I'm not understanding how serious this roof issue is and how the Board of Health determined it was, it was serious enough to warrant this type of action.
I think it's a gray area in terms of what is and is not in habit. And that's, that's a difficult thing to deal with. I'm looking at this from another perspective and saying, the water, I think, is black and white.
Water is black and white.
And I would ask the question, what do you need to get a certificate of occupancy from a building inspector?
They cannot...
If they walk through that house, the water, right, you're out, right with the water. But beyond that, what do you need? Wendy?
I don't believe they can get a certificate of occupancy unless they do a certain amount of renovation in the entire house. Certificate of occupancy, my understanding, is not necessary. What we are discussing...
Is not necessary for what?
To meet the sanitation requirement.
Oh, okay.
The sanitary codes, and just regarding the roof, I understand that there might be a little bit of subjectiveness, although I would, there would be people who would argue with that, that it's fairly black and white as well. But I think we have worked with the Gates, and I know that, I have photos from, you know, off Google, and actually, you know, here map. I apologize. The town has aerial photography that is available that shows that there have been tarts on that roof for quite a number of years. I went back to 2013 or '12, and there were tarts there. So it's not a question of us going there and being roofers and/or building inspectors. There is a need for repairs, substantial repairs, it would appear, from a visual inspection.
What is the exact, what is the exact repair that's needed to the plumbing in order for there to be running water?
So they have never allowed us inside the house. That might be additional issues. We have no idea if they have sinks, toilets, baths. That's not anything that we know about. We're just looking at the outside of the building and have determined that there are items that are below what the state requires for minimum standards.
It seems like water is needed, and more specifically, hot water is needed. So a plumber is needed, no question. And it sounds like there is no contract with anybody.
Michael, thank you.
A contract with anybody, a piece of paper?
For the plumber, you mean?
Well, that would be an important guy.
Verbal, I think it's a verbal contract.
But they will need something in writing before they start anything.
The exchange, I mean, he and I have exchanges. He's just waiting for me to clear the rest of the...
But may I ask, may I say something?
He told me he basically, he wanted me to like, clear the basement for him to check the whole system. He's seen the parts that we've addressed, the scenes so far that are damaged. There are pipes that have, like, the seam is split because the pipe, they're common pipes, and the pipe froze. So there are three or four sections like that that he's aware of, but there may be others that he can't access yet to look at. So he doesn't want to start until he can address the whole system.
It's not a question of starting. It's a question of having a contract to start.
Well, he can't, he can't really give an estimate, like, knows the full extent of it.
Like, can we get, can you get a contract to do...
An assessment.
An assessment. I need an inventory of exactly what needs to be done.
That's what I'm telling you about.
Written, we need something in writing that's evidence.
What, may I ask a question? What is your timeline on cleaning out this basement to get somebody in there to assess?
It's about another week. So we got delayed, I said, basically, there were two weeks that were taken up because of Bob's health situation. So in the course of about a week, I was able to, more or less, almost all day, clean out two-thirds of the basement. And I should get the other parts to let the crawl spaces from that other week, just get that sorted out.
May I ask?
So that he can then get in there and see the full extent of what he needs to do.
And then can we get, what about a contractor to get inside to look at the roof?
Well, that's the person who did my roof, he's the same contractor.
Can he get in there and get, so there's nothing stopping from getting an estimate?
He has already given us an estimate.
They have, she, with a...
But no signed contract?
He has given us a estimate.
I don't know if he's signed it or not, but I think there's a digital...
We're gonna need that, we're gonna need that.
May I say something that nobody, you know, knows about it? Because it was originally set to, or so on. We're not just doing a roof. We were already in charge of doing something for the whole house. This house needed certain things that we forever did not do because my husband was a freak of law. And he was saying, you cannot enlarge, you cannot do this because we're within the 200 feet from the roof and so on. So finally, when he saw what is happening around it, decided, okay, then we can go ahead and do what you want. So we had told the town that we're not just doing the plumbing, that we're doing a lot of different things. We're expanding the house on the garden side. We're taking down completely the front porch on the front. It's going to be eliminated because it was never part of the house. We're fixing the roof. The chimney was already redone. It's covered with the tar because raccoons from the rally yard that were going inside the roof. And we have tar, with tarts, whatever. So the roof had been finished to put a cap. He said, we can do that.
What do you expect?
So there are a lot of things that they have been throughout the time.
I think, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Your, that time has passed.
No, I know. But, you know, a lot of things have happened.
You don't have the luxury of time anymore.
I know, but we're seniors, we're 70-plus years old, both of us. We had things happen. My husband fell down last year.
We understand these extended waiting circumstances. But I think what we're looking to do is find a path that gets you to where we want you to be, and we haven't seen anything.
We just need evidence.
Yeah.
This is, this is gay. We don't do a back and forth. You have interrupted several of us. Michael?
I've got two questions as far as the plumber. I don't know what I can get from him as far as a signed contract because he doesn't want to give an estimate until he sees the full extent of it. So I...
Can you give him a contract for what he can't do?
I can, I can offer a suggestion. There is such a thing as a zero-dollar contract. Ask him to put in writing what he will do to perform an assessment, and the cost is zero. And then you sign that. That is a zero-dollar valid contract, and it should have a completion date. And that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's...
If we could put together, get the vote to move forward with the legal services for the Board of Health, that, we've already talked to the legal, I'm sorry, the lawyer that was working with us. She said that there would be at least two to three weeks that between turning in the request for the next hearing date and the actual date being, you know, heard, would be set. It would probably be two to three weeks out. And that sounds like it would allow for the week for Michael to finish cleaning out the basement, would allow a week for the plumber to get in, and potentially even another week for him to get a estimate written. It would give the Gateses time to talk to the, or their contractor, to talk to the water department, to find out what's necessary to get the water turned back on. It would potentially give, I'm not sure why the roofer is not able to give you a quote, but it could work.
They gave us a quote.
Oh, that would give you a lot of time?
I was back in January.
Please, you don't interrupt, please. Yes.
And so both of our, we would be able to move forwards and so... And if we get, find contracts with reasonable timelines in place, we have no problem. And we've indicated to the Gates that the Board of Health is happy to allow the work to be done by them and the contractors they choose, absolutely.
I think that the, Madam Chair, I think the, again, a linchpin is, are they living in the house or not? Because if they're not living in the house, then it's my understanding, they are free to take as much time as they want with their renovations.
Okay.
If they are, if they are actually sleeping in the house, that is the problem, okay? You understand that you cannot sleep in the house. You cannot live in the house.
So I would like to say that there is a bit of an issue with that because the emergency response, and I checked this with Chief McDilly. He will still send, the fire and the police will still enter the building unless it is boarding off. So they are still in danger. They can't get in and out safely. And have pick the names and see if either you're allowed in there or you're not.
Can I ask a question? Has the house been condemned?
No.
Why not?
Beyond that, so it was introduced, and instead, the boards allowed them another month to continue. And at that point, we filed in court instead of formally condemning it. It also, to formally condemn is also... It also, to formally condemn is also an expense to the town to board it up and pay for somebody to come in and board it up. So it was choice of they're going to filing in court or spending to board it up and then filing in court.
So what, what is the process? You condemn after, I guess.
Typically, you would condemn prior to this, getting to this stage.
Right, that's.
So found counsel felt like we were beyond that, and that it should proceed straight to a court hearing to, to, to give a court order to come and, to come up to code, because that's what would happen after condemning.
Right, it just seems like.
So we basically skipped the condemnation process, and the court was agreeable to going right to a court order demanding compliance with code. And so we would be at the same spot regarding.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, I'm just wondering why, you know, why did we skip that?
I don't have a good answer to that, why? It's just, there was an effort to try to kind of cajole and encourage compliance without doing that.
Another question, has the building inspector been into this home, or does he have no role to play here at all?
He, he, he would have a role if he would like. It's not necessary as far as the issues that have been currently raised. But we did ask initially, the first complaint we received, we reached out to him regarding the roof. And I believe he spoke to the Gates, or somehow that information was conveyed to the Gates. And that was their initial permit, well, not initial permit, but that was their permit, I think in March of 2024.
I'm confused, what did the building inspector do? I don't understand what.
Building inspector can play a role, or it can be.
It sounds like from Wendy, he did something, but I don't understand what.
He was involved with the request back in the spring for building permit.
Okay, and he issued a building permit?
I don't know if it was issued, but it was applied for.
Applied, okay.
But I don't know if there was follow-up, I don't know, I don't know how complete that application was.
May I ask a question?
Wait until Mr. Fetterstil is done.
So I was just gonna say, I think, you know, the situation here is, we have owners who are saying, we just need a little more time. And I think, from the Board of Health's perspective, that little bit of time has already been given and then some. And so there's a frustration level there. I think the owners are frustrated because I think if you'd only give us a little more time, we'd get it to the finish line. I think it's important to keep some pressure on the owners to follow through and give us the written evidences that have been asked for. So I think it would be appropriate to, to proceed with the receivership process. And I think if you wanted to give four weeks, that would be okay. But I think, I think we need that deadline.
So to, one more time, so receivership, once we vote to go into receivership, or authorize receivership, it's about a two or three week process?
Right, so you can authorize it starting in two weeks from now. And that would give them five weeks, typically four to five weeks to show the evidence that indeed, real progress is being made.
So all they need is a contract from a plumber and a contract from a roofer.
And we'll be happy with that. So the question I have from Mr. Gates, young Mr. Gates.
Well, I just have a clarification, so I texted myself the term you used, the zero.
Zero dollar contract.
Plum yourself be familiar with that, or do I need to?
It's just a contract and the price is zero, that's it. I mean, a lot of people think a contract has to have a dollar amount, the dollar amount can be zero. It just outlines, here's what I'm gonna do, and the plumber should basically say, I'm going to inspect the property's plumbing and provide an estimate of the work involved in order to bring it up to code and turn the water on. And so the deliverable from your plumber is the estimate. And if he's going to do it for free, the cost of the contract is zero dollars.
So I would like to point out that that's not actually giving us a signed contract for the work to be done.
Right, yes, we understand, but it's a helpful step in getting documentation as to exactly how much work has to be done. I think, because that's what the issue is, part of the issue, we don't know what this is all going to cost.
I've got a question, is this gas or oil heat?
No gas, no, we have electric heat.
Oil heat.
And that's the thing that I like.
Mrs. Gates, please let Michael answer.
Okay, I, you know, plumbers get involved with heating. And you not only need water, you need hot water. I think it's going to be a big can of worms trying to figure out for the whole house, what's the plumbing deal? You've got all kinds of pipes going in lots of different places. I'd be happy just getting a hot water heater going with just, you know, a line going there, so you've got some water going someplace. I think the heating system, that's part of the plumbing problem. And, unless you say it's electric, but.
Please.
Okay, go ahead.
Current system in the house was an oil heating system. My parents are planning on switching to an electric.
Right, so it's not there now, that's not reality.
Well, they've been using, they've been using electric heating for the last, for the years now.
A mobile electric heater that you.
Every one.
Okay, I understand, that's not central electric.
No, I understand, I'm just saying.
May I speak, Michael?
No, no, you may not speak, and it's not Michael who controls this meeting.
No, he doesn't know everything.
Well, been a problem for 12 years, that's a long time. And I'm just putting that out with the plumber that where he's gotta go, and to try and do everything may be very hard.
So I'm just saying the oil heating system is not going back in, so that's not.
Okay.
That's already been decided.
Okay. The heat is electric with mobile devices.
At the moment, but.
At the moment, but the intention is to break it up.
Just space heaters.
So not space heaters.
But it's also going to be electric going forward, so they're going to put in a proper electric heating system.
So I think it's, having been through this with my son as a renter in Boston, space heaters do not constitute electric heat. That is not a, it's not a habitable place if all you have are space heaters in every room.
No, no, I'm not saying that's what's going to be used.
No, I'm talking about right now, so that, again, this all pivots on the fact that no one can be living there, right? Because space heaters don't count.
But if we do, we're not here.
So this goes, I think, more to my comment that the plumber is focused on running water, not focused on the heating system.
But you also need heat in order to have an.
Yes.
But, but I think right now, I hope, we're trying to figure out what the steps are. It's not going to happen that they're going to do a full renovation between now and four weeks.
Or a plan, I just want to get to minimum standards.
Can I ask, can I ask a good question?
Jeff, please.
If, do you think in two weeks' time, you can get this basement cleared out and get a plumber in there?
Yes.
Two, in two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
And you can get a signed contract from a plumber?
I believe so.
And you can get a signed contract from a roofer in two weeks?
So that, the roofer and the, there's already a contract, not fully formally signed because of the addition that they wanted to do. Came down to speak with the building permit person about a week ago about doing removal of the porch and some other things that are also going to be done.
So that, that can be a separate contract, you can get a contract just to get the roof done.
To fix the roof.
Okay. So if we gave them five weeks' time, they should have, be somewhere in two weeks. And if not, we'll be moving on.
So I guess.
Like filed July 1.
So I, so I think that is a fair way to proceed. I would, they'll formally vote to proceed with receivership if that does not.
Right, I'm saying make, make the timeline five weeks.
And I also think part of the, what they're directed is that it is not habitable. And there is not to be anyone living there.
Right, oh, right.
Sleeping there. You can do work in the house.
Yes.
But, but Katrina and Tim cannot be in that house on a daily basis.
Right.
Agreed.
Michael?
Yes?
I am in there on a daily basis to do things in there.
That's fine.
Okay, so my mother has been concerned, because a lot of times when I go in there, it's probably around like 10 or 11 o'clock at night to do things, and she's like, they're gonna see lights on, they're gonna think people are living here. It's like, well, does this guy have time to do things? So I don't know if this is part of the problem with whoever thinks someone's living there, because I'm in there, like, weird hours doing stuff. It's been very frustrating for me.
So I also have a suggestion. I understand you want to renovate your home.
Yes.
But right now, you are at risk of losing it. I would urge you to focus on repairs first, okay? The minimum necessary repairs, and then worry about expansion later. Just, that's just two cents worth of advice. Because this is a very uncomfortable situation for everybody.
That's what the judgment of the judge, the court on May 9th was, that his only judgment had to do with the water connection. And he said, you know, just, you know, good faith efforts, get that done, and then we'll proceed from there if things seem to be going out of control, if that was the case.
So I've got a question for Greg, one more time. So if we follow, and I like where Jeff was going with this. So we signed the order today, or agreed to receivership and give them five weeks to produce the information that we require, is that what we're saying?
Well, two weeks, and then you're saying maybe another three weeks before.
Yeah, because there's no, the work's not gonna be completed in five weeks.
No, no.
You know, so we need to, we need, if we give you the week, two weeks to clean that out and get someone in there and get what we proceed to be, that'll be our judgment, if it's inadequate.
I think what Jeff was suggesting was that you have two weeks to generate a signed contract for the plumbing.
And a roof.
And that if we don't see that copy of that signed contract, then in two weeks, at that deadline, you will proceed with the receivership process, which will basically give you another three weeks. Assuming it takes that long.
Yeah, why don't we just agree that it gets filed on July 1? You've still got two or three weeks, we're gonna be meeting on July.
Seven.
Seven.
We should have something in front of us.
You have the Board of Health.
You could really kick this back to the Board of Health, but yes.
Yes, but that seems so that you've got to.
Frankly, I'm worried about kicking it back to the Board of Health.
So Wendy has her hand up.
Yes, Wendy.
Hi, I just wanted to make two things clear. The judge's order referenced the ordered letters from November 5th, November 4th and November 5th. And those includes, so all of the items that the Board of Health has been asking to be fixed. And I do understand how the select boards are assuming some ownership of the negotiations that you have made. But this is a Board of Health order that has been approved by the Board of Health, and I just did want to, you know, call to attention that the board does need to see the documents, agree that this is adequate, which they will, because this is what we've been asking them to do all along. But I, but I did just want to mention that you can certainly, you know, we could work on this together or otherwise, but the Board of Health does need to see these documents as well. So I just want to make sure the Gates understand that anything they turn into you, they do also need to turn into the Board of Health.
Anything they turn into us is a public document.
Yes, but they also need to turn it in to the Board of Health, just specifically. I just don't want them to not realize that.
I think you've made that very clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarification about the water? Because when you connect the water, you have to connect it to the whole house. Now, we're not gonna have a water heater anymore. We're having a new system with the one that heats the water as the water goes through. So when you do that, the guy cannot come and do it now without any extension and everything we're doing. So can we just put the connection of the water, but not have the hot water? Because the hot water will only be in the kitchen at this point, which is the crawl space.
All you need right now is a signed contract, that's it.
So the sign for the whole job to be done?
Right.
It doesn't have to be done, the whole thing, because it will be with a new connection afterwards that will have to be tight to the rest. That's what I'm asking.
You just need a signed contract right now.
That's fine with us.
A signed contract to make the repairs needed to make the house habitable, regardless of what expansion plans you have, would not put your home at risk in order for those expansion plans to be taken into account.
We'll do partial and then continue the rest, if you put the whole job in one or just a contract.
You need to do that which is necessary to make the house habitable first.
With the water, with the roof.
And then move on to your expansion plans. But at the moment, you are not asleep in the house.
We're not, we're not. I will live, and our home is a good home, our living room, our dining room, that we have no signs of any problems. We have things in there that I would even leave there if my house was not a safe home. We set the roof, that needs to be done, and the water to be connected, everything else fine. We don't have a modern kitchen, we don't have granite counters and all that stuff, which is a old kitchen.
Okay, thank you. Michael.
Do I submit them to the building department or?
Well, you have the contract, drop it off at the county administrator's office, and someone in that office will see that everyone who needs it gets it.
Just to your, sorry to jump in, Greg.
Please, Mr. Paletta, please go ahead.
To your question about schedule, you know, there can be simultaneous tracks going on here. Court proceedings will take time to get scheduled. So your approval will then initiate a process with the court. It'll take time for them to set a hearing date, that'll be weeks out after that. So it's, you don't necessarily have to do them in step order. You know, you can, you can keep the pressure on while also giving them time to.
Well, that's.
You can always withdraw from the.
At what point can you know whether to withdraw?
I think.
You draw it right up to the hip.
Because you will get a date.
Five minutes before, yeah.
You will get a date, so you know when that date's coming.
Once the order is done, it's done.
Once the order's done, it's done.
But it may be, it may be.
You will understand this.
Five, six weeks before that hearing, yes.
Yes, Tom Cuntzer did indicate that on a matter of this nature, they tend to act pretty quickly.
And I have to assure you.
Mrs. Gates, please don't interrupt.
My understanding is that even if we have the hearing date, that the time to set, it would be a decision to go forward with receivership. There would still be additional meetings to get a receiver on board with a plan. There are steps before an actual receiver is granted by the court permission to go in and do the work. So that would likely be, you know, the six weeks or more out.
Question, so what type of individual is normally hired to be a receiver, appointed, I should say?
There are professional receivers.
Professional receivers.
There are, it's a profession that you can enter into, apparently, they're all men at the time.
Contractor types.
Okay, and they would be allowed to get into the house and tell us what's really going on?
The court has a list of receivers that they use.
Okay.
Well, I'm still in favor of setting a date when we would file this at some point in the future. So the clocks start ticking.
I think you should say you will proceed with the receivership process in two weeks, if you have a contract.
Yeah.
I think that's the deadline.
I think so.
I think you said that better.
May I have?
It's their house, so.
No, I don't. Because we are the owner of the house, my son is not the owner.
I understand, Mrs. Gates, please, go ahead.
Thank you. It would be insane for us not to fix what we have to do in our home, trust me. I was embarrassed for the past two years to see my roof the way it was. Michael was the one who climbed up with those tarps, so the shingles will not. Michael was the one who would climb up with those tarps so the shingles will not fly because they're too long to be together anyway. But it's only the front part of the roof that has a problem. We would hate to have the town spend money on us, taxpayers' money, to go to court and all these other things. I don't know how we arrived in this kind of state. And I have to trust me that I have never heard anything like this in my life, and I have never experienced it. This is the first, and I hope it's the last time I ever come to anything like this. And I promise you that we have the funds. We had people who were trying to say, maybe we don't have, we haven't paid the taxes and all that stuff. Said, we have nothing done like that. It's just that things happen in life, and some are personal, some are not. We are hoping, I wish my house was done last November, but it wasn't. So from, I thought, oh, maybe by the first of July, it would be all done. Well, it's not going to be done, obviously, hopefully, some of it will. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think what we want to say is that we will authorize the proceeding toward receivership in two weeks.
July first.
July first.
That sounds good to me.
Unless there is a written contract from a Florida.
And a roof.
They would still have a two, two or three week window after that to get something in, and then we would stop.
So what we're saying, if we can get those documents, we won't go to receivership.
We're authorizing receivership tonight on a certain day.
If we don't receive that information by May certain, then we take the next.
Then it's filed, and they still have some time.
And I think that is, the minimum standard would be habitable.
It's unclear to me what exactly, the full extent of habitable.
That should be outlined in the court documents.
Wendy, are you able to just summarize the, what is it, list of four or five items? So we have water, we have roof.
Have egress.
Egress.
The front retaining wall.
Oh, no, that wall was done by the town. Do you want the town to pay for it?
Does the front retaining wall have anything to do with the habitability of the house?
I wouldn't worry about the retaining wall.
So I'd like to, did we, I didn't see the, I must have missed it. Did we have the court order in this package? I must have missed it.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I got lost in the bands and the bonds. I don't see it.
Here's.
What page?
Oh.
We shouldn't be, to Wendy's earlier point, we shouldn't be making up the list, right? So, but.
So you could just say comply with the court order. Contracts to comply with the court order.
So.
This is the complaint from the Board of Health.
Right.
Which is not the court order.
Right.
And.
So.
Yeah.
Where is the court order?
No, that's the complaint from the.
That's the complaint.
The correction order, is that the court order? Okay.
Oh, is it?
No, the correction order is the order that was, that the Board of Health sent to the Gates.
Okay.
Okay, so where is the?
Do you have a copy of the court order?
Court order. I don't know what I'm approving if I can't see the court order.
We gave it to them in their packet. Basically, it's saying that they have thirty days to comply with the orders of correction dated November fourth and seventh, which are basically the same except one said that there was no water at the house.
So what you're saying is the court order says that they must adhere to the correction order issued by the Board of Health?
Yes.
Correction order has three things listed on it. Failure to maintain structural elements, maintenance of areas in a safe and sanitary condition, retaining wall, and means of egress. Again, I don't understand. Here's my problem, okay? I have no problem with the Board of Health requiring running water, but some of the items on this list, I'm just questioning how this has anything to do with the habitability of the house. Retaining wall, what does that have to do with it? And what experience on the Board of Health membership says it is structurally unstable? I want the building inspector to go tell me it's structurally unstable.
And then it says retaining wall is less than ten feet from foundation. I don't understand what.
So that's my, that's my problem, Greg, is I have no problem with the Board of Health's purview, but I'm uncomfortable with, are they possibly going beyond their purview out of the goodness of their heart? You know, trying to make sure the home is in decent shape. I'm questioning some of the items on this correction order as possibly outside the purview of the Board of Health.
They're all listed in the sanitary code.
May I explain quite a little?
Painful is going out onto or into the walkway space, and potentially that could cause fall or an accident.
I think at the moment, this board is less concerned with possibly tripping on the sidewalk than.
I would just point out, though, that the judge was comfortable putting that in his order. So you do.
Well, I understand, but he's assuming that this was, I mean, I don't know anybody on the Board of Health as a construction expert. I just, I would feel more comfortable if the building inspector had deemed that area unsafe or.
Inspector won't do that, though.
Yeah.
May I answer that? Mr. Orlando already had sent us a letter when the wall started bulking out, the stones were not taken down, because the plows in the winter, there was a hole, it's a hole in the corner, and they will go sometimes through, so they will hit the wall. And the guy, the man originally, when that happened, and the wall actually broke in the corner, the town paid to have a man who does chimney work, he's in the brick and paper and everything. And he came and fixed it, but he fixed only the part of the corner that all the rocks were really moved. And then the rest of the cracks maintained the same size open. So with the winter and the rain, that froze and started pushing the stones further up. And Mr. Orlando sent us a letter, which I have last year, and he said, those walls, the wall has to be fixed because it's endangering the people who walk on the sidewalk. So I, we talked with Mr. Orlando then, and we said, actually, the wall, we explained what happened.
The town should fix it.
And he said, I said, but we don't want the town to fix it, because they fixed that before in the corner, they didn't do the rest. So I crowbarred the rocks and put them down, and Michael moved them in front of the storage. And we thought in the spring, we're going to have to build the whole wall, because the whole wall is a problem. And it's not a part of the foundation. It was built in the forties. The foundations of the house were built all under the house, and they're like mycenium boulders, and have nothing to do with the foundation of the house. It was done much later in the forties, definitely. So we're fixing it ourselves this summer.
My opinion, that's beyond the scope of what we should be worried about here. We should be worried about contract for the roof, contract to get the water going, and go from there.
Go from there, that's it. Just those two items.
I agree with you.
There is an issue that emergency personnel would, I'd be concerned about emergency personnel trying to access the wall.
So on that topic, my thought is that everything that I've seen, though, there is temporary stuff being placed in front of these openings or these entryways because they're working on the property. And I don't know that that's different than any other construction site.
Yeah.
I just, it's not permanent obstruction.
Our home responders are reasonably agile.
Yes.
And what are they responding to?
Right, when no one's living there. They're responding to a construction accident or something.
Which would happen, which would be a lot worse than that.
Right.
Michael, what temporary things are you currently referring to?
Oh, it says like money plants or something somewhere, so that.
I think that, from what I understand, there was a log vision. The temporary storage facility, they have access to their building until seven o'clock at night. One night, I went to move some chairs, but it was after that time. So I left them on the front of my parents' steps with a tarp over them, and I guess someone saw that and thought there was, it technically wasn't obstruction, but it was there for one night until I could take.
And it's gone now.
It was, it's been gone for eight months now.
Is the front door accessible now?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. I drove by it today.
But it has plus a clause.
Oh, okay, fine. That's the way you access the house.
I go both ways.
It's about the access egress and both are clear.
My mom likes to put some flower pots in front of it, because she doesn't want people coming to the, she had a sign for the UPS people to not leave packages at the front door, but they kept doing it anyway, so she put the pots there, make them go around.
Why are UPS packages coming to this address?
I guess that's where I get my packages delivered to, even though I live across the street.
We have a garden.
Peel the onion.
I don't have it. Like, their back door is safe because it's in the yard, mine is on the street.
Right, right on school street. So if anything is left there is very exposed.
Somebody took my face the other day from the wall that I was giving up.
Okay, so. Have we made a decision?
So I guess my point in looking at this was, how do we formulate the order? I'm not looking to agree with everything that's on here. I wouldn't take somebody's house because they, you know, didn't fix the retaining wall. So I think we need to be very specific about what items constitute a serious enough.
The roof and the water.
Roof and the, and running water. Those are the two things, and that's it. The rest of it, they can fix in their renovations.
Just to be clear, the only reason they ended up in court with us was because of the running water.
Right.
Right.
That's number one.
Right. Okay, that's understandable.
To everyone's point here, I'm good with further defining of the order as to those two items.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm, Greg, can?
I believe a motion is in order to instruct the.
It's not going to be written out here, I'll tell you that.
The motion is to request from the owners, written contracts by July first, that will bring the water up to code in the building and fix the, to repair the roof, the habitable standards. And that, if that is, if that documentation is not received by July first, the town will have the Board of Health proceed with proceedings for receivership.
Just one other question. Can we put a timeframe for the, I mean, some scrupulous people might say, okay, I've got my contracts, I'm done now. Do we put a timeframe when this work has to be done, like within the next six months?
I would not.
You know, I don't know with contracts.
If they're not living there, it doesn't matter if it takes two months or six months to have the work done, right? The point is they can't live there.
We have to do it in the summer. I don't want to be in the winter.
I know, but I just, I just don't want, we're comfortable, we've got the contracts in place, we're done.
Yeah, I want to say within six months then, starting date.
I don't, but I, but we can't, you know.
You can't tell a contractor.
We're going into the summertime. Contractors are busy. They pick and choose when they're going to show up. So we can't hold them, you know. I want to see it like a new.
Six months is a long time.
It is.
But the contract should stay.
You should give a, you know, with an update on construction progress within.
Number of months.
Okay, that's what I want to see. I want to see, there's a metric that we have to follow. I want to make sure that they were just not placating us by getting us the contracts and then walking away from it.
Okay.
Or would they be coming to us or going to the Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Health, right?
I would have the Board of Health.
Are we going to the permit, Mr. Orlando, for this also?
He'll have to.
Yeah, because we have to give him the, so we reported to him, so he can come and check.
You have to pull, your contractor will pull permits.
The contractor will deal with the building inspector.
Because the roofer, who is coming, did it over the internet and the woodwork. We actually said, let's do that house first, see how the work goes, because we never knew how he works.
Lost out on it.
And then we saw the corners, and we didn't think that was very well done, so we wanted.
At this point, you are seriously in danger of losing your house.
Well, I hope we don't come to anything in my life ever, something like that. And I promise you, I'm not proud of it, I'm sick of it, and I would never, never say anything that I would not do.
So even if the roofer doesn't do things exactly the way you want?
Not exactly, I'm talking about the quality of the work.
I, you need to have a roof, you need to have.
No, 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 I'm saying what they did.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, so the motion is that the select board will authorize the money, the legal fees for a petition for receivership unless there is a contract for providing running water and roofing.
Hot water, running water.
Running water and hot water.
Yeah.
Right, by July first.
By July first.
And a progress report will be provided on the progress of the construction. I would say every, give a progress report every two months until completion.
Okay, two months, good. Okay.
And does that give us, is there a caveat there that we're not satisfied with the, I mean, it's.
You can always find.
That becomes subjective, that if we're not satisfied with the progress, or if you got a contract and you're staring at that top still for another four months, what's going on here?
No, you can, you can always move to a vision.
Because we have that paperwork.
We have the paperwork.
Can we do that?
I mean, that's fair. I think, I think that, I think that's more than fair.
Yeah.
Where we are now, where we were and where we are now, I think that's, here, I think it's, speaks to the issue that you are dealing with with the Board of Health, which I think it's, I mean, it's the way to go.
May I say something to all of you? We would have been already been working on the roof of the house now, the same roof of the day, but because of my husband's three weeks, I was involved in it, I know.
We're aware of that.
For a long time. So that brought the, roofer said, well, I have another job. I cannot wait.
We don't need the job done.
No, no.
We just need a contract.
But I want the job done.
I understand that you want the job done, but first, you need a contract. Debbie, can you read back the?
Yeah, they read back in about two days.
Can we ask AI to read back?
Let me try again. That. The select board will authorize the planning board, the planning, the Board of Health to move toward receivership unless we have received a contract for, to bring hot and cold running water into the house, and a contract to repair the roof.
By July.
By July first.
By July first.
And with progress reports on construction.
And we will require progress reports every two months, three months, every two months until completion.
We have to change it from hot and cold running water to the house. They already have water to the house.
In the house, sorry.
In the house, I want to say, in the house.
Okay, in the house, not to the.
Oh.
Second? Was that a motion? I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion? John?
Yes.
And says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian and Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming and explaining all of this.
I'm sorry, we.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. And we will.
Hopefully, we don't see you again.
We will.
I hope I don't see you. I hope I don't see you for this.
Yeah. That's good.
We will ignore complaints that there are lights on at odd hours.
We will have, no, but we leave them on all the time, the lights there, because we don't want anybody breaking in at any time. So will the light on?
I tend to go to bed at like two, three in the morning.
Okay.
If anybody sees them at five, because they're there all.
So we trust you that when you say that you're not living there, and if we find that in fact you decided to sleep there.
Oh.
We will see you again.
We'll move to receivership. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Okay, at some point I have, right. Okay, the, next is the amended flag policy final reading. It's something. Anthony transferred his.
I have a motion.
You have a motion.
I have a motion.
You have a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to know. My name, uh, Hughes Courtfish. I, I moved the select board approved the request from the Manchester by the Sea Museum to fly.
That's not, that's not it, that's not, we're talking flag policy.
Flag policy.
That's Anne's.
Well, you said it was me, that's why I wanted to say.
No, it's not, it's not.
I move the.
It's actually Anne.
His volunteering is hard.
Yeah.
Number six is.
I move that the Board of Health updated flag policy as written. Discussion. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Very good. Then we go to the Forster flag.
The flag, yeah.
Uh, I moved that this, can I do it now?
Sure.
Chomping at this for a while now. I moved the select board approved the request from the Manchester by the Sea Museum to fly the Forster flag in commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution and the first version of the American flag on the Town Hall flag vault pole from July 1st to July 6th and to sign a proclamation to that effect.
Second.
Discussion.
Forster flag.
Yep, Forster.
Forster.
Does anybody know what this looks like?
Yes, there's a picture.
There's a picture.
I didn't see a picture.
And it's got, it's red, it's got seven stripes on one side.
Oh, that's the flag, I know what that is.
I thought it was a Ben's bit, to be honest with you.
There it is, right there.
It's, it's a battle flag.
I didn't know that, I'm like, what is this red flag?
It, it's not a display flag, it's a battle flag, it's how you find your unit.
I think we're gonna get a lot of questions on that.
We are.
We should probably have some preempt, preemptive communication on that there.
It's planning an article next week.
Well, I would put stuff on social media, this is not, you know, Communist China raising.
It does look like a Chinese flag, I guess.
It's a lot like that.
I think you're gonna hear some.
Well, definitely.
Well, I think the explanation.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's worth it, and I think, and I, and then, you know, this is not part of this discussion, but I'd like to see, and then, an annual event, probably around Patriots Day.
Yeah, maybe it's Patriots Day, all right, the museum board is taking note of that comment.
You know, I think that, for the, for the first time.
I will see prominent in the parade also on Fourth of July.
No, it won't be really on our, uh.
Well, we have a replica.
There's a replica that will be on the.
But I think that in the future, I mean, I like the unveiling of it, this parade, but I think that if it was supposed to go to Lexington and Concord.
I think that's a, I think that's a good date, that's a good idea.
You know, and stop, and then just stop at Al's and be done.
Like they did in 1775.
Someone will have a proclamation for you to sign, if you can stop by.
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah, it's not yet tomorrow.
Okay. Good. All right, did we vote on that?
We, we have a, I don't think.
Yeah, you did.
I, did we vote?
You read it.
But you, you made the motion.
I'm not doing it again, because he corrected me on how I pronounced it, too.
Second.
I had a lot of.
Jeff, you, you were the second?
I did sec, I did.
Okay.
I said it, but I don't know if we voted.
I think you did, though.
No, we just discussed it, I think.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's vote again.
Uh, yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Should I move flags temporarily?
Right.
So, like, Wednesday afternoon, Debbie, would it be ready? If you're out tomorrow, it wouldn't be ready Wednesday morning.
I'll try to get first thing done Wednesday morning, and I'll send it out to you guys soon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
It's not gonna be long.
Right. The next item is, um, the hybrid meeting protocol. And it starts, the purpose of this room and memorandum is to, the standard proper protocols. I think.
So. Uh, again, so it says here, it's the, uh, first memorandum is established for, I, uh, the, the genesis of this is that it's my belief that, uh, all adjudicatory boards should be meeting hybrid. Okay, I think that, uh, we, we should be holding all these, these boards to highest standards, okay? For, uh, community interaction and engagement. And as such, all boards should follow the same rules of conduct, uh, when it comes to public engagement. All right? And I can speak more to this, I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory as to what I'm trying to accomplish here.
I, I have a problem with the, as it can mean, probably this meeting is available electronically. In the event of a technology failure, the meeting will continue in person. If we're only requiring a quorum of the board being present and other members of the board are coming in by Zoom, I don't think it's appropriate to continue the meeting if we don't have.
Well, I think this was more to, to speak to, uh, it would, uh, say a presenter, say an applicant, uh, had a problem with a Zoom. Just like, or an applicant couldn't make it to a hybrid meeting, okay, we would automatically continue that. This is just, uh, the, the disclaimer itself, okay, was ripped from the pages of the Town of Wyndham.
Yeah, I, and I, I, even if it is ripped from the pages of heaven. Um, I, I think the Zoom portion of our, our meetings is important, and it's a significant step toward transparency of the board and, and making it optional.
I'm just saying, I'm, I, maybe I'm, I didn't present it properly. My point being that if there is a technical glitch, that prohibit, or that, so one particular item on the agenda can't be heard, because say it is just an applicant that's having problems with the Zoom, but, you know, who is present, all of a sudden he can't get his displays up on the board, or he can't share the screen, or whatever, a myriad of reasons why it doesn't happen, that particular, uh, item on the agenda would be, uh, continued to the next opportu- opportunity, all right? Uh, it wouldn't end, it would move on to the next item on the agenda.
It's, what, what concerns me is if it's the whole Zoom that falls off, and nobody can, can follow the meeting.
So.
That means other board members who might be on Zoom, they're out for the rest of the time. That's, that's the point.
That's, that's.
Or the, a major point there.
Or, or.
So.
For boards that take public comment, someone who had, who had comment that they thought was significant.
I understand, when you're on Zoom, you're taking that chance in that situation, if it's that important, show up.
So is this a mute discussion? I thought we received information that Town Council said we don't have the authority under state law right now to, to, um, enact this type of procedure.
I think, I think that I still think it should be protocol.
So let me offer, um, possible compromise. Um, I, I read the council's, you know, opinions, sounds like we don't have the authority to mandate anything, but I understand what you're, what you were trying to communicate, the last time we talked about this was that you think people ought to have the right to come to a meeting and face the adjudicatory war in person, okay, in person. Can we establish a, I don't know if we call it best practices, or maybe protocol is the right word, to, um, you know, the committees have the right to run them how they want right now under state law, but if an applicant requests an in-person meeting, I would hope that the, the, um, board members would, would honor that request and hold an in-person meeting for them. You know, rather than say, all the meetings have to be hybrid, you know, you may have applicants who actually would prefer Zoom, because they may be working in Boston, have a, you know, an hour and a half commute here, so can we put it on the, allow the applicant to do what you say? They give them the right to request an in-person meeting?
I hear what you're saying, all right, I just, I don't even know why we're debating this, to be honest with you. I think that this is the, the, what I read, as far as reasons they don't, we don't need it, I thought were excuses and not reasons, okay?
You're talking about Town Council?
No, no, I'm talking about the, the one board in particular that is an adjudicatory.
He's talking about Town Council.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking Town Council, like, I, I, I'm wondering if we are trying to discuss something that we don't have the authority to implement.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I kind of, I'm leaning.
I didn't realize that, we talked about it two weeks ago.
I'm, I'm leaning with Kathy, I think we ought to make the statement that we prefer hybrids rather than, and anything that is, that is going to be totally Zoomed.
Or if an applicant, you know, if someone, the resident is requesting an in-person meeting, people ought to show up, you know, I, I think.
And if, if that's the case, why then people have to show up in person if an applicant wants to do that, but otherwise, I think we can just say.
We can't order other boards to do that.
No, we are not. We're saying we prefer that everybody meet hybrid, and I, I know that one board is in.
Yeah, we can't, when, when does that, um, state law expire, 2027? It might be two, uh, it might be two years before.
This is insane.
I think it's been extended a couple times, though.
Now, you gotta write a note to your state senator or something, and say you don't want this, but, because that's the way it's written right now.
Well, again, I vehemently, I, I would prefer to implement the, uh, protocol and then let someone come back and come after us.
I think they, Concom said they would do that, though, and do we want to engage in more?
No, I don't want to spend.
Litigation, I don't really, I'm so up to here with the wonderful litigation that we already have, I don't have.
There is, I'm gonna say, there is no good reason not to do it.
I think communication is a personal preference, unfortunately, and since we're all humans, we don't all have the same preferences.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we're all humans, but it could be wrong.
Well, it's unfortunate that no one feels that way.
What should we do?
Well, again, I think that, in the best interest of this community, all right, we should afford them the opportunity to meet in person, okay? Um, I think that the, uh,
It's, nobody around here is denying.
Okay.
So wait a minute, has Concom, and so, my suggestion was that we, we allow an applicant to request an in-person meeting. Have we actually asked Concom if they would object to that? They're reasonable people. Well, but, but we did, I don't think we asked that specific question, they're very reasonable people, and I would think that, you know, if, that they might go along with that, you know, if an applicant really wanted an in-person meeting, would you be open to holding one? Maybe that is something we can write into the policy or.
They would have to agree to it.
That's what I'm asking, but if we haven't asked them, then we don't know if they agree.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's, it's a, it's a road to go down, for sure.
Well, why don't we ask?
Are you the Concom rep?
What?
Are you the Concom rep?
I am, I am, but I try to keep, I keep trying to go to meetings and I can't find them, because they're not here.
Oh, you mean going physically?
I show up and no one's ever here.
Right, so maybe you can ask them if they would be open to that as a compromise, you know?
Okay, I will, I will, I'll ask them the next time, I think they're July 1st, I think it's.
Yeah, July 1st.
Right, uh, I just, again, it's.
It would be disappointing if they said no, yeah, no, a resident comes to them and requests an in-person meeting, that would be disappointing.
I read their, their memos, uh, they don't think it's necessary. But anyway, that's enough of that.
I, I think we've gone, we've kicked this one around about enough.
Okay, to be continued.
I'm going to suggest that we stand up, because I have been sitting for long enough that my legs aren't.
So if you're trying to stand, we all have to stand?
We don't have to stand, but I am going to stand up and get myself a glass of water.
One minute recess?
You just took me out of the knees. Here, it's illegal, it's not, it's not.
I kinda care.
Well, you know, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do something.
Right.
All right, and just because they can hire to tie, doesn't mean that they should be hired.
Well, that's what I want to see with the temperatures, I want to see what kind of answer they give.
They gotta answer it.
I think that's important, let's see what they're really.
I should have stood up.
Let's see what they're made of.
I'm not, I'm not. I, I don't think I was asking anyone to be firstborn.
Look, I used to have an hour and a half commute home, okay? I'm telling you, there's no way I could have made a 6:30 meeting which would have benefited all of you, all right? But I'm just saying, if, if, if you have to show up in person all the time, that can be rough for some people, but everybody works on K-Ban.
You could also separate it between a meeting and a hearing.
There you go.
You know, for a hearing like you're talking about, when you're facing the adjudicatory board as a resident, that's usually through a, a hearing, which is held to a higher standard of.
I'm willing to.
There you go.
I'm willing to entertain that.
So is that, is that against the law? Did Town Council say we couldn't?
I think, I didn't read it, but if, when I, when we looked at it, the law doesn't say that you, the law doesn't really authorize you to make that rule, but it doesn't say you can't.
A public hearing.
Uh, that, that a town can, like, set up a standard process. You know, it doesn't say, I have to look at the Town Council, but when we looked at it, it wasn't that, the law isn't super clear on, it just says what, what boards are allowed to do as far as open meeting law, but it doesn't say. Each board has its own authority, or the Board of Selectmen can or can't set protocol, right? Is that how?
She's interpreting the fact that, she interpreted the law that said boards can meet remotely. It's giving them the authority to make that call themselves.
No.
But that's interpretation.
Interpretation, yeah.
But, I, you know, the suggestion of a hearing, maybe that's a, an avenue that could be pursued or something, but let's see when they come back.
See, that's, that's a sensitivity with regard to, uh, the applicants. The other piece of the picture there is that if you don't have in-person meetings, many of the board members never meet each other. That's not the case with this particular board, because they have field.
Second visits.
All the time, but there would be a lot of other boards where, and I mean, I joined this group when, uh.
Everything was remote.
Everything was remote, we didn't see each other for two years.
Bottom line is, you can't run a big company unless you have remote meetings, so the notion that everybody has to be in person for everything is really not true, and that was long before COVID and long before Zoom, so it's just, you know, practice.
Could we ask Town Council whether it would be possible to distinguish a hearing from a general meeting that, that?
You can ask, I mean, technically, everything that Concom does is a hearing.
Yes, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're always dealing with issues.
That's just one, that's Town Council's.
Always that one.
One thing, all right, I'm willing to, I'm willing to take this fight.
Um, when would you like to take this fight up again? I am done with it.
No, I'm just saying is that, all I'm saying is that we have Town Council's opinion of the interpret, how they interpret the, uh, okay? I, I would like to set the protocol and see what.
Well, and, and if we have another discussion on this, I would like to have the in-person protocol be driven by the resident, the applicant.
Can we put this on per?
Because not everybody is in agreement that, that virtual meetings are ineffective.
Second July meeting?
Yeah.
21st?
The second meeting in July, or?
The second meeting.
Second meeting.
I want another meeting without this one.
Okay, I'll do that if we can give up doing, ever doing trees again.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
All right, I will, I will, I will agree to that if we can come up with a compromise, and I never want to see a tree again.
I understand. I understand.
I'm with you.
Okay, let's move on to the liaison assignments. Kathy, you have several and you've added, I think, facility.
So I here's what I have issues with. I really it's not so much the volume, it's the timing. I I have problems with the Board of Health attending the Board of Health meetings. I have hardly attended any of those. And actually, I'm just not assigned to the CBA, so I don't know how.
I'll take this.
That was never mine, so that is not mine.
That was mine.
Okay. I also have issues with Wednesday evenings, the Finance Committee, so I'm looking to offload the Finance Committee.
I at the moment am down in the School Committee, so I would take on Finance and Board of
Yeah, so then that just leaves me Bike and Ped, Downtown Improvement, and the Facilities Committee, and those are very managing.
John, you have you are the only one who has an department.
Yeah, that's correct. Well, actually, you're dealing with safety.
I do. It's a it's a what do you call it? De facto kind of public safety.
Yeah, he's dealing with he keeps in touch with the chiefs. So that's that's kind of the.
That laughing ball or dunk.
And that's an appropriate, I mean, not appropriate few necessarily, but that's an appropriate thing to keep an eye on.
And we can talk about this during the liaison updates, but how something grew out of that discussion. What we.
That's what we're working on right now.
Well, the updates, we're talking updates, not update assignments, but the actual liaison updates.
And and I have I also have library under my.
You can have library.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, you you just swapped out library a while back.
Yeah, so I've got Pox and Rec, Concom, and Z B A.
And public safety.
And public safety, yeah.
Jeff's not a newbie anymore, so you.
Yeah, time to load him up.
Well, I'm on the school committee too, though.
Oh, that's right. I know. That's why you're on Essex Tech.
That's true.
Well, so you've got so much experience with School Committee, maybe you should take the Manchester's.
I don't want any more schools.
Just thrown it out there, pal.
Okay. My understanding at the moment is I have School Committee, Finance, and Board of Health. John has Public Works, Department of Public Works, Historic District, Council on Aging and Library. Kathy has Bike and Ped, Downtown Improvement, and Facilities. Brian, you have Parks and Rec, Z B A, Concom, and Public Safety. And Jeff, Planning Board, Harbor Advisory, and the two Essex Tech.
Essex Tech.
Yeah, I want to get something else you want me to.
We'll find something.
I have a question. Did we formally disband vote to disband the MBTA zoning task force?
No.
We need to.
No.
Yeah, we did. We kept it on because of ancillary, you know, lawsuits that were happening in other towns. I feel we are ready to disband that. I know we jointly created it with the Planning Board, but can we just vote to do that or do we need to have a big discussion with them?
I don't think it's a big discussion.
Okay. I move that we disband the MBTA zoning task.
You probably should put it on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, right. Okay, I will withdraw my motion. Should we put down the agenda for next time?
On the next time.
Should we combine that with the roles and responsibilities for Downtown Improvement and Downtown, not revitalization, would you call it? Invigoration? And just and just formally disband that? We have to know when to close things off.
Okay, at this point, we have we have liaison reports. No, we have liaison confirmation, we're consent agenda, and I would like to remove B from the consent agenda and consider the rest of it as.
You want to do the updates?
Liaison updates.
That was after confirmation. It's just talking.
Okay, sorry. Updates. Sure. Let's back up to you. Liaison updates. John?
Yeah, Library met Friday. I guess it was Friday I sent in on their board meeting. They've got a new chair, Sarah Davis, who was elected. Actually, she filled in, I guess, the end of someone else's term, but she was elected again. So she's the new chair of that. Nothing, just the usual stuff going on in Library, nothing major report out of that. Public Works, I think we've all seen the signs that are now up.
Yay.
I've read the comments.
That's been a positive.
What social media is saying about these things?
I have read only positive comments.
I just heard that, wow, they're really small.
Oh, I read.
I said, wow, we didn't have enough money, did we?
Kathy and I sat stood next to them in the D P W garage and said, oh, God, they're really big. But once you put them up there and you stand back.
I did. I posted them mostly vast, vast majority, very positive. So I think it was a good one.
That's.
And with now, do we we cut back on the amount of signs, right?
Right, we did.
Yeah, we did.
It was in the phases, yeah.
So I think it would be helpful if D P W could communicate to us when they plan or what what are the locations of the remaining signs and when they plan to do it? Because I know they didn't have enough money to do everything this year, but I thought we instructed them to just wait till the next fiscal year, which is only a few weeks away. And so what is their plan?
They've got a couple more coming by coming to us with regard to the bathrooms, public bathrooms.
Also, I think that what I've heard is that it would be assigned for the what I like to call the secret passage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I have.
It should be two-sided.
Yeah.
Oh, it's only one-sided?
Only one-sided. So if you're coming from the beach, you don't see the sign.
Yeah, that was the one comment. One comment about that particular sign, its placement.
It's hidden behind other signs, too.
It's hidden behind it's on a light pole that's right behind a parking sign. It's like a.
I don't know, is the one down here double? That one doesn't really have to be double-sided because somebody's coming.
It's the one on Beach Street. Yeah, one on Beach Street. But other than that, I think everyone.
Okay, all right, that's.
Their comments, they like the design.
That's we'll see what the story is with that. The Historic District Commission has had now two hearings on cargo, and they changed their their plans. I don't know if you've seen their plans. Have you all seen their plans, I think, and know what the story is? So they've got the garage is now at the top of the hill. And in fact, so you're parking your car on the second floor of your house, but that's just the way it is. They've got a one-car garage up there. And a lot of the noise went away when the primary hearing came down the pipe a week and a half ago when they saw that the garage was now in the back, and it was reduced to three stories from four stories. So there are some minor things that need to be dealt with. It was not approved at the last meeting, and I guess will come up again, I guess, about three weeks. But it was stuff like, you know, the dental trim work, some fencing, some railings on the.
Some details and details.
These details sort of thing, but nothing nothing that was major. So I expect that there may be a vote on that at the next meeting, which is, I think, the second Thursday of July. And Council on Aging and the Senior Center surveys are going out a week from today with regard to public opinion about the Senior Center. And this is to finalize messaging associated with the money raising initiative for two and a half to three million dollars. They will be surveying, they want to get 150 surveys, and they are also interviewing 50 people in person over the next, say, three weeks or so. They are sending the survey thing out to, I think, 2,000 people starting next week and hope to get 150 back, cutting across all demographics. This isn't just seniors. It's a little bit of everybody. And they're expecting that they'll finalize the findings of this probably by the middle of July and hope to start the money raising initiative at the end of the summer, the first of September or so. In concert with that, and I guess the Facilities Planning Group is associated with that, the architects need to get going on a rendering, and the Facility Planning Committee is part of that, and certainly initially and in the middle, et cetera, because there are a lot of stakeholders involved with how that floor plan is going to look in terms of people who will work on this building and who would be possibly offices in there and all kinds of people. And so that's going to have to go through a vetting process with a number of groups over over the summer. But they hope to have a fairly good architectural rendering that meets at least most people's expectations by around the first of September. So that's got to move along because that is obviously needed in terms of the money raising initiative. But that seems to be moving along pretty well. That's it.
Kathy, Bike and Ped meets this week and Downtown Improvement already has to delay their meeting next week, so I have no.
Sometime in this, you know, the beach is open. For what purpose, I have no idea. Winter burns, I guess, whatever. All right. The parade is pretty much all set. They've chosen a grand marshal. I will let that let you all ruminate over that and try to figure out who it is. Okay? But something grew out of this, just we call it just public safety coffees we have is Jake McNeely just offhanded saying that the fire apparatus lost loses Wi-Fi as they get to Singin' Beach Club through cooperation between D P W and Pox and Rec. You now have a Starlink setup at the beach. Okay. The it's going to service at this point just we'll take care of, I assume the apparatus that they approach, but each personnel, the town employees, will keep the ATM up and running all the time now and also take care of the concession stand. I think that's all we're concerned about this summer.
Right.
And then we'll see how it goes and if there's a way of expanding service to the general public on the beach.
I don't even know how that works. You have to sign in or something or?
I'm not sure. I think it's probably it's probably a secure website right now. I mean, a secure site at this point. And I think that someone more knowledgeable and either understands why I have problems dragging a red six over a black seven, that's all it is. But I'll find a way of the problem is with the cost, and I think right now, I think it's like $90 a month or something like that or some insignificant, well, not insignificant, but for the service. But if we expand it to a general population and how it's going to burden the system itself, I don't know. So these are things we're going to look into.
That should be looked into, but yeah, there are people who prefer go to the beach and not get there.
Don't tell anybody.
As I say.
You don't have to tell anybody. You're not going to pay for service or something.
It's also becomes an issue for a lifeguard at the fire end of the beach. Sure, who has to call for help or something?
They certainly have radios.
Okay. But we've, you know, so that's where we're at. Just go on, just keep on throwing sand, kicking sand on what happened.
It's great to have it.
All right.
That's great.
And there's no Z B A meeting this month, so I can't report on that. Concom up, I could practice as soon as they're working on. I'm not letting that one go.
Planning Board had their public forum. I think we're all there in the downtown visioning, so I won't go too in-depth into that. One thing, actually, Brian, I noticed, which seemed like a good idea, was exit interviews for businesses that are leaving town. Sounded like a good idea to get feedback from people that have either left or.
I don't know if that happens for us or the chamber.
Yeah, but it's.
Good topic for tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, yes, tomorrow morning.
It's a good topic.
Some good information to gather, I think. Harbor Advisory, there was some more talk about the enterprise during the Harbor Enterprise Fund. The committee seems to be getting on board with that. I think it's mostly think it's a good idea, I think. And a little more talk about Harbor Master Office. There's still questioning having a separate committee for that. I know we talked about the Building Committee covering that possibly, but.
Yeah, we have a lot of committees. I just.
Right. Some of the people in the Harbor Advisory thought that because of the certain aspects of a Harbor Master Office, maybe.
I think when we, I mean, every facility that we're going to encounter is going to have its unique elements. And and when we discuss a particular facility, we ought to make sure we bring in the right representatives to deal with those unique aspects. I think that's a really good point.
Yeah. They did have a steering committee before, but COVID happened, and then that was kind of that stopped.
Did they? So the thought behind that committee is behind that Harbor Master Office is still to have it like around Reed Park.
Yeah, so you know, where that little beach is in the corner.
Like that flat.
Yeah, that little area right there. But it would be what they're talking about now is it'll be either all on pilings or partially. I don't know. Greg, do you know anything about this?
It has to be.
Has to be on pilings to get this opportunity for more grant money if it's tied into Reed Park floats.
Well, yes, but but also, even if you're on Reed land, it would need to be elevated.
Right, right.
I was always curious, just.
There's also so a second location, there have been kicked around about putting it actually on Morse Pier.
Right.
Where that where that shelter is basically converting that shelter into a building, enclosed building, slight expansion.
What I like about that location is it services Moscow better.
Correct. You got your bathrooms right there.
So I just I think that's really the suggestion. I a placement of the Harbor Masters, I understand why they want it on that side of the train tracks, but since the launch, you know, the ramp is on the other side of the train tracks, I've always wondered, have we ever collected any fees for the launch or launching of boats? You know, in other places, when you have a public landing, you have to pay like $10 or something.
Yeah.
From here?
Yeah.
No. Well, there's that there was talk about that.
Yeah, that's so hard to.
There was talk.
Well, if you can't see them, yeah, it's hard to collect.
If you're here, just.
The Harbor Masters boat is at Reed Park, which.
Right. No, I understand it makes sense, but I ought to I as part of the harbor finances, we ought to figure out why what do we need to do to collect fees for launching boats?
They actually work on that right now.
There was there was some talk of having fees for companies that regularly launch boats.
Right, for commercial.
So commercial would be easier to control. It's the casualty, you know, somebody comes down at five o'clock on.
They were talking about a Q R code with attached to DOCA.
Something. I just think it's a missed opportunity because, you know.
It, yeah, I think it's just the problem is to have someone physically there exceeds the value of what you're going to pull in. So that's kind of what they're, you know.
What do we what do we think we're talking about for money?
I don't know. That's why I just wondered if the Harbor Advisory Committee ever talked about it because in other places where I go, you know, the Harbor Master is right there, you know, they launch a boat right there. He sees you launching a boat and he comes out and says, where's my where's my money?
But you're launching.
Someone in the office.
Yeah, but your boat ramps back here then.
That's what I'm saying. It's the geography, this is a challenge, not.
Oh, if you you're talking about putting something back here, you mean?
No, I just want the Harbor Advisory Committee wondering if they could look at it, you know, what would be necessary to collect the fees? I don't know what the volume is, but they do it in other harbors.
I think it's pretty low. I don't know where these trailers go.
So anybody who.
You have a beach, a lot of.
I don't know.
Some of them, but not, they're not for me.
Anyway, anyone who has a waterway sticker from here is free. So that cuts that, those people out. Your commercial, like Ann said, your commercial people are where.
You can do that, okay.
You could do that if, you know, a person-by-person basis is harder to.
Yeah, I don't know what the volume is.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there is talk about, it's out there, so.
And the school committee is doing, the school committee stuff, you know, figuring out what, how they're making progress on their 10-year plan and their three-year sub-plan and their year plans within, and, it's, it's good stuff. They're doing vertical integration by subject and horizontal so that there's some consistency to what's being taught. And, but, we're interested in is that they are in fact starting to talk about the budget next, either this week or next week.
Hallelujah.
Yeah, tomorrow doesn't mean.
Even better. Not even July yet.
School's not even out, there's been talk.
Go ahead. It's unlike other years.
It's apparently not on my schedule, but I will make sure they get it on my schedule.
Great news.
Oh, it is on my schedule, I know, because I officially need to get to a doctor's appointment actually. Yeah. And then I hope we don't spend the whole meeting discussing the better, a better name than the number of questionnaires. And that, that's, my way is on the report. Now can you go with consent agenda?
With the exception of B.
With the exception of B.
Therefore, I move the select board approve the consent to agenda items A and C.
Second.
Any discussion? John.
Yes.
Answers, yes, Kathy, Brian, and Jeff.
Yes.
On the reappointments, which was B, there was some major shuffling that was going on to make room for Woody. And I've forgotten the details of it. Has that happened?
So.
That was, um.
Hi, Jack. Jack, go ahead.
Yeah.
Right, Joe McDonald's here, that moved to.
Housing and property.
To housing.
And then be the rep to the CPC, so she'd still be on the CPC. She'd still be on, she would be the rep for the.
She'd be the rep for that. That was the deal.
Because Beth is.
Is moving.
Right.
So, I just don't know if that has actually happened for them.
Uh, Jack? Um. Okay. Why don't we?
Needs a styling.
Yes.
I think some of the, there were no new applicants, we interviewed the new applicants, right? So these are all reappointments.
Yeah.
In the future, I think it would be helpful to understand how many terms each individual has already served, just as a point of reference.
That'd be interesting.
Yes, I think it's, I mean, that's why we, you know, are frequently taking a look at the committees, and I think it would be helpful to have that.
Okay.
All of these would be two? Or would some of them be one, one term?
No, all of these are.
Certainly two terms.
Everybody here is two plus.
Two plus.
So, basically, the second term is an automatic if they chose, choose.
Right.
Right. These are.
There aren't too many, I think most people do kind of do that. Okay.
Out as it were.
I would like to defer the Board of Health reappointments.
I would as well.
Mm-hmm.
Allow them to continue until our meeting on the second meeting, John.
Okay.
Gives a chance to talk to Board of Health. I have got, perhaps we all have, something from Sarah Melish strongly recommending Andy Oldman.
Did any of the other chairs comment on these reappointments?
Everybody was good.
We asked them about the reappointments?
I mean, I asked about, I asked by on regards to the Harbor Advisory. They've always been, they're very well-placed. Sarah's definitely said it. Cultural Council, I didn't really get any word back from Diane, but.
Because I, one of the things we look at is, are these people attending the meetings, right? Because if they're not attending the meetings, they shouldn't be reappointed, and sometimes a chair needs a little help to address that issue. I'm not sure if.
And I know Open Spaces, definitely. They're going.
They're what, I'm sorry?
Steve Olger and Patty are always there.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we should, if these are all like three-term people, I'm wondering if we should just check with the chairs of the committees to make sure these people are contributing.
Well, I think Mike Chapman is.
Yeah, Mike Chapman is the chair.
He is the chair of them. And I, I know he's active, and I think he is active.
Right, I mean, for the ones we know, I'm happy to approve, but I don't.
I think most of them, but that's totally fine. I can check with the few that.
Yeah, I mean, Bike and Ped, did you ask?
Steve.
David and Dana. Each year is Bike and Ped.
No, I did not check for those, no.
Check with them, I'm just, I go to a fair number of meetings, I'm not sure I see.
Sue.
Yeah.
Brian Fry's been there.
He's, he's been attending.
I have no problem with that, I'm just shocked that he's been there six years.
Yeah, I don't know if he can be.
Who's it, no, he was first.
He can be on multiple committees, John, like. No, these are.
They're on the.
He's just, he needs to get reappointed.
Yeah.
I missed the first one, yeah. He needs to, he's only been there one time, so this is just.
Well, that's, that's the question, because he has not been in town that long.
But we have to, but didn't he get appointed to the planning board?
Yes, he did.
So it's up to.
He got elected.
Elected, I mean, so.
Reappointed him in my, my first term.
Yes, I remember he was here and we appointed him.
But that is a question I was wondering, because.
So why is he on this list? That's pretty.
Well, wait a minute, hold on, hold on. So you belong to the select board and you are also a member of the.
I was on the ZBA.
That's not a problem. I'm just saying, all of these people have served on these boards for six years.
Yeah, so I don't think.
That's why they're here, because they.
Right, right. Brian.
I don't think he's lived in town.
No, no, no.
With the exception, I didn't get him on the last round.
That's a mistake.
That's a mistake, that's why.
See, I'm watching everything.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think there's any issue with him being on the committee, but I think we need to check with the chairs of that committee and make sure that those members are attending and are, there's, there's no reason if, you know, they still want to help the committee, they could just call in whatever, but they don't have to be a formal member.
We can check.
Let's see, who else? So we're going to pause, Board of Health, we're going to pause, Bike and Ped, and any else here? CPC?
Oh, yes. Jack, would very much like to be reappointed.
Yes.
About Dean?
And Dean Nahadas is, is chosen by the finance committee.
Okay, and we validated that with Sarah.
Council on Aging?
They need the people anyway. They only have five people.
There's still, I can see.
Yeah.
Cultural Council?
I didn't get, Diane is stepping down, so there's three people on that.
Okay, again, I just, I'm fine with keeping the names, as long as we know that they are attending and contributing, so I'm just trying to understand which ones we feel comfortable approving, right? If they're not attending, I, we should not keep their, we should not appoint them. So, you, so we know Board of Assessors, Board of Registars.
Oh, they need them, need her. And she has been going, and I, to Christie.
I'm not, you know, we're not just trying to put warm bodies in seats. Okay, so Board of Assessors, Board of Registars, Nahadas, Emergency Response Coordinator, the CPC, I'm going to get you there, Council on Aging, we're not sure if they're.
We're not sure, but.
Okay.
Need them there.
But if they're attending, we've got.
But I know, but they do, they do attend to the meetings with Diane, because then they can't have the whole, they, they need to be there.
They're down three people.
Yeah.
I go to those meetings, and they just barely get the.
Yeah, the forms.
Well, so that's my point.
No, that's because they're down.
That's because they're down three.
And that doesn't involve these two people, these two people.
Those show, showing up and.
That's what I'm saying, are they showing up? That is my question.
Yeah.
Okay. So Council on Aging, Cultural Council, is this resident showing up?
I'll check with Diane, but she didn't get back.
Okay, so we're going to check on Cultural Council. Finance Committee, we know. Harbor Advisory, we're sent there. Stream Team, do we know?
Patricia Mitchell, definitely. Deborah Faves, I gotta check with, by, Jessica. Yeah.
We don't know about Stream Team. We know MAP City, Open Space, we know those folks attending, Parks and Rec, Sean is attending, and Winterfield. Are you sure on that one?
Mike Chapman, definitely, because he's the one who responded for Diane.
And James Maroney. Okay, and ZBA, so the only ones we don't.
She's, she's.
So the ones we're going to double-check are Bike and Ped, Board of Health.
Cultural Council.
Cultural.
And Stream Team.
And Stream Team.
So shall we, is there a move, motion to reappoint the members of the committee that you did not just list?
Yes. I move to, I don't see a motion, but I'll, I'll reappoint the members on this committee list with the exception of Bike and Ped, Board of Health, Cultural Council, and the Stream Team.
Second.
Are there any discussions? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
Yay.
Okay. Uh, chap administrator's report.
Yeah, briefly, just a heads up, vendor for the trash pickup, they are in the middle of negotiations with their union, unionized workers. The contract expires the end of this month, so there could be some pickups in trash pickup in July going forward, depending on how things progress. So the Republic vendor has said that they are putting in contingency plans. We'll have to see how this pans out. This is one advantage of also having a transfer station in addition to curbside pickup, that is indeed, there are problems, people have that option, taking the bags to the transfer station. We'd be dealing with another issue if everyone were doing that on a Monday, but we'll have to, have to see and think about, you know, do we assign people different days of the week by alphabet or something like that?
Play it on your card.
If indeed this becomes an issue. So, heads up, not sure how it's going to play out.
You listening?
I see Tony taking notes over there.
July 1, very convenient.
So, yeah, we haven't had this before, so this is something.
No, there's a crisis for the new town administrator's trash.
He was just commenting, what is the crisis, what's going to be hitting first?
That's what I get the whole time, what's the big one? Oh, I know, it's trash.
What's your, what's the contract with Republic? When's it up?
They have another year on their contract with the town, which is another issue that has to be negotiated. But this is separate from that.
Yeah. So. I'm sorry, does that affect recycling? That's different, right? Is it just trash?
No, it's the same.
Okay, so it's everything?
It's everything.
Not black earth.
Not black earth.
Not black earth, so just trash.
Recycling and trash. Yeah.
So this does expire on the 30th? You said has another, what has another year?
Our contract, our contract.
Oh, with Republic.
With Republic has another year.
It's their deal with the workers.
This is their contract with their workers.
So the people may be on strike as of July 1?
Correct.
And how, you'd notify the town through social media, I'm sorry, I'm looking over here.
I don't think you want to send anything out on.
No, we don't send anything out now, but we have to be prepared.
Trouble.
We'll see what kind of plan B they're able to put into place if it's needed, and how successful it is. We need to be prepared. We're working with Chuck and Tiffany.
So, so that would mean, because June 30th is a Monday, so people who have trash pickup on that Monday.
They should be fine.
They should be fine, it's the people on the Tuesday.
On the parade route.
Yes.
Ooh, that could be a mess.
On the parade route, on Pine Street is a Monday, so we're good there, but I don't know about the rest of it.
Central is Tuesdays.
That's right, yeah.
So maybe we'll just have, we'll bring, you know what to do, we'll put in the parade, we'll put trash, trash. People can throw their.
Trash.
We can pull two birds and one stone.
It's not a bad answer.
On the parade route, not to volunteer the DPW, but if we had to.
Yeah.
Pick up on the parade route.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's a fun one.
Yeah, yeah. So, like I said, hopefully we get lucky and things work out, but we need to be prepared. You want to talk about the finding sites?
No.
Julie and I have been spending days together. Wasn't common on how well it's going, I think it's going well, so a lot of information, the meeting with department leaders, and talking about the different projects, and just getting up to speed in general.
Mm-hmm.
We'll continue to do that this weekend next. So next, Wednesday, the 25th, we have an all-staff lunch. You have an opportunity to say goodbye to folks, and for Tony to say hello to all staff. You should be welcome to come at the chapel on, on Wednesday at noon.
Thank you very much, John.
So, that's it for me.
Do we need an executive session?
I'm sorry.
Do we need an executive session?
You don't, I could, we're not ready to make decisions. I don't have a lot of additional information to share, I was hoping to have more, I could give you, I could give you a two-minute update on each one, if that would be helpful, but I could also give that in writing to you.
I don't know, I'd prefer a two-minute update in person, just.
And anything that's in writing is public.
Right.
Sure.
We're here, I just assumed it was 10:30.
It's not 10:30, it's 9:30.
Right, right.
We got to, Tony's got to learn that this is how long to go. You're not in the hunt anymore. You're not in Oz either.
I move that we enter into executive session, not to return to open session, per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and also do so declare.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Ann says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian and Jeff. Okay, we need you to turn off the.